Good evening, everyone. Please take your seats. I'd like to welcome you to the Glendale City Council meeting of September 25th, 2007. May we have the roll call, please? Council members Draymond?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Eusefion?
Here.
Mayor Njerian? Here. I would like to invite Councilman Quintero to lead us in the fly.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. The Glendale Character and Ethics Project's word for the month of September is responsibility, and the project urges and encourages us to be accountable for our actions. Former U.S. Surgeon General C. Everett Coop once said that "life affords no greater responsibility, no greater privilege than the raising of the next generation." Let us pray that we accept this responsibility and in fulfilling our duty to the people of our community, do so with patience, understanding, wisdom, and foresight. Let us pray for these qualities to be bestowed upon us as we accept the challenges before us this evening and work in harmony together towards the betterment of our city for the next generation of Glendaleans. Amen.
May we have you report?
The agenda for the September 25th, 2007 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, September 20, 2007, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes, the Housing Authority came out of closed session. I'd like your motion to adjourn for the Housing Authority.
So moved.
Second. The Housing Authority stands adjourned.
Okay. Well, resume with the City Council agenda. The next item, please.
Presentation and appointments at 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meeting of October 2nd, 2007.
And Mr. Tuktalian?
Thank you, Mayor Njerian, members of council. Next week, we have a number of items on council's agenda. We'll be starting the day at 9:30 with a special meeting to resume discussions on the City Council's prioritization of capital improvement projects. There are no items on the Housing Authority's agenda, however, there are a number of items on the Redevelopment Agency's agenda. The first item is the Regional Alex Regional Theater Board Quarterly Report and Year-End Statement, as well as a report on bid proposals received as part of the long-term maintenance and capital projects. The next two agenda items consist of requests for signed variances for the installation of additional signage for BJ's Restaurant and Brewery located at 101 North Brand and Island's Restaurant located at 117 West Broadway. Moving on to the City Council agenda, there is a number of consent items, as well as three action items and one hearing. The first action item is an update by the Director of Libraries regarding progress on the Community Photo Project and a request for fund appropriations. The second and third agenda items consist of presentations made by the Interim Director of Glendale Water and Power on a professional services agreement for financial advisors and bond counsel, as well as a status update of the activities of the Glendale Water and Power Public Benefit Program. And finally, council will be presented with an appeal of a design review board case located at 2023 Sierra Place.
Mr. Mayor, a quick correction on that. We actually will not be having a budget CIP study session next Tuesday, but instead, the next study session will be on October 9 at 9:30.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Mr. Eusefion?
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to let you know that I will not be in town. I will be attending a conference in Kansas City, Missouri. I will be gone from the 29th until the 4th, so I will not be here.
Okay. And before we get any further in the agenda, I'd like to, as a courtesy, announce to anyone who's here on item 9C, that when council takes up this matter, it is highly likely that we will be continuing this for at least two weeks. So if anyone's here on 9C, it's highly, not that we're voting on it now, that it's highly likely we're going to be continuing this.
Yes, well, staff will be recommending you hold the matter over.
Okay. In case anyone was here on that. The next item, please.
At 3B is commendation presented to the Glendale Educational Foundation.
Thank you. And who do we have? Ms. Hunt? Mr. Sad?
Good evening, Mayor Njerian, members of the City Council, like John Sad, on behalf of the Glendale Educational Foundation, to invite you all to our annual, Third Annual State of the Schools Breakfast, October 4th at Edison Pacific, at the early hour of 7:00 in the morning till 8:30. We hope you're all able to make it. We're going to have as a special guest this year, the State Superintendent of Schools, Jack O'Connell, and we're also going to have Senator Jack Scott with us. There'll be information presented about our school, there'll be performances by the students, and a couple of special presentations, the Teacher of the Year, and also our own Chip Stone will be given a commendation as Parent Volunteer of the Year. We're in our third year at the Educational Foundation. Our first year was dedicated to arts and music. The second year, funds were raised for tech tools for our schools, for computers and science and technology. And our third year is health and fitness, so we have a miniature soccer ball. So we're actually going to have some exercises and stretching take place that morning. So we would be honored if you could be with us. That's October 4th, it's a Thursday, Edison Pacific, 7:00 in the morning, and thank you for your time, and we have invitations for you.
Thank you, and I would like to present you with a commendation for your support of our community and enhancing the programs and the students in the Glendale Unified School District, and to wish you the best success on your Third Annual State of the Schools Breakfast.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take home my final.
Thank you.
And I have with me Susan Hunt and Sally Nielsen from the foundation, and we appreciate your time. Look forward to seeing you October 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item?
At 3C is presentation, Christopher Townsend, Townsend Public Affairs.
Mr. Townsend?
As part of our ongoing work with the city, they've asked us to be available to make a report on a quarterly basis. We'll be referring to a memo that was distributed to the city dated September 14th. We could just touch on some highlights like last time and leave ourselves available for questions and answers for the spirit of moving things forward. With me is Heather Dionne, also Jason Quimby. Heather works closely on your projects with staff. You know, we've been going through some, I'm going to invite her actually to come up so you get a chance to meet her and learn quickly about a couple of these items and a couple of the opportunities that are happening. So Heather, if you want to just quickly touch base on them, and then we'll just answer some questions and sail your way.
Hi, good evening. Just wanted to touch on a few priority pieces of legislation. We just finished the session, the regular session, heading into the special session. SB 586, I'm sorry, by Senator Dutton, this would allocate $100 million out of the Prop 1(c) housing bond for housing innovation projects, critical to the city of Glendale as you move forward with your housing projects in the downtown area. This is sitting on the Governor's desk, and we are advocating for his signature. Another piece of legislation, AB 196, this is cleanup legislation for the Prop 1(b) allocations for local roads money for cities. This was the bill that would allocate portions of the funds to cities and other portions of the funds to counties. There was a little bit of wrangling over that early in the legislative session, and cities needed to fight for their fair share. That's also on the Governor's desk, and we're working to get him to sign that, looking good. And then lastly, an important piece of legislation in regards to water. Water's sort of the topic of conversation these days, but AB 1489, this is a bill by Assembly Member Jared Huffman, and it would make pretty radical changes to the Integrated Regional Water Management Program. This is sort of the wave of local water funding and critical to the city. We have been working on this extensively with the city, also with Metropolitan Water District. The bill was held in Assembly Appropriations and is becoming a two-year bill, so we have a little bit more time to work on it, which is a good thing because we're sort of in the heat of water right now. So I just wanted to touch on those things. I'll have to answer questions after Christopher.
The water bond will present an interesting opportunity. The Governor has really laid out a lot of political capital to try to get a water bond on the February 2008 ballot, and fortunately for the city, Assembly Member Kocorian was appointed by the Speaker to the Special Task Force that's trying to hammer out the details. So we know that groundwater cleanup is a critical issue for Glendale, to make sure there's plenty of funding for that, and then whatever else we can do on top of it. Highly doubtful there'll be any line item, you know, pork-style earmarks in those accounts, but there are things that can be done in terms of criteria, priority, whatever we can do to leverage Glendale's position. And then in the trailer bills that will follow to implement in the budget bill for next year is where we can continue to work with the Assembly Member and Jack Scott and the rest of the legislative leadership to make sure Glendale gets, you know, more than its fair share of what it needs for groundwater cleanup. I'd say that's the highlight with the water bond. I would comment on a couple of other items. They are in a special session. The water bond deadline officially right now is September 27th. I need to have a deal done by the 27th. That will not be met, and that deadline will likely be extended under protocols that have happened before. The legislature will ask the Secretary of State for an extension. I believe she will grant one to mid-October, and if they don't meet that deadline, they could extend it, I believe, all the way to about the first week of November, and that's truly the drop-dead date. And they could do it as a supplemental ballot summary, whenever you see those, for items that are late that they put on the ballot. So I anticipate that process to perhaps go all the way through the month of October. So we'll continue to work closely with your staff on that. At the same time, they're also working on the healthcare. There's a concurrent special session on healthcare, also very contentious efforts by some to try to link the two issues. Technically, they're different issues, but whatever they can for one side to get leverage with the other side. You have a lot of interesting, you've got a lot of Republican interests that are very activated to try to get the water bond done. You've got a lot of Democratic interests activated to get the health bond done. That leads for some interesting politics at times, but we will continue to push on those funding opportunities. Speaking of funding opportunities, I want to discuss two things, and especially the hard side, when things don't go the way we want. We did not get some, two grants from the California Cultural and Historic Endowment, and I'm here to talk about those. We worked hard with your city. We thought your city worked hard and did two excellent applications. You had two projects you went for. We talked about this, a library project and the project with the park and the barn. And first of all, I want to make it clear, they did not cancel each other out. That was a concern raised before, it was a good strategy question. If we had two, will they cancel each other out? And I went through all the materials, and that was not the issue at all. Where we really got hurt, I'm trying to use cleaned-up adjectives or verbs, is by staff in a way through this convoluted process where we couldn't, we got limited on the political engagement we could do. Basically, to give you an idea, we had basically, the staff had written two excellent sections on sustainability for both applications. One scored fine, the other, basically the same language, was scored by different readers so low that it made that application disqualified because you have to meet certain criteria of different applications. I don't want to go too deep on it, but you basically, we got abused by a score. And the other application was great, it was just one point below the 25% threshold to make it to the finals, where then it becomes the political process where they dole out the money. And that being said, the fund, a couple options that are out there. One, there are some previously funded CCHE projects authorized that look like will not happen, so that money will go back into the pot and will be reallocated. And we would like to work with the city, and we may make a decision if we just want to pick one, and just to make sure that one gets funded with the money that comes back in. There's also an effort undergone by Hector De La Torre, who some of you know, who spearheads the CCHE process, and Assembly Member Kocorian is helping him on this. They're working on another library bond, which is of interest to the city, and in conjunction with that library bond, can there also be funding to replenish the CCHE fund, and therefore we could have two separate funds where the library could go for, the traditional library and the other project could go through the CCHE. That's just on those two specific items. We have a recreation trails grant, kind of referred as Mountain Dew, if I get that right, and that's about $200,000 application you're putting in. We're going to have Ruth Coleman and Cedric Mitchell, the Director and Deputy Director of DPR, meet with your team on this. We're going to have Cedric visit this personal. It's illegal for me under state law to guarantee that that will be funded, but I am telling you, I am committed that it will get funded, because I'm so upset about what happened with the CCHE. So I want to make, you know, you guys will be made whole and have gotten at least $200,000 out of that. As we continue now to move forward on a bunch of other items, the real bulk of the funding, they're getting ready to start to figure out how to divvy up. With the Prop 84, all the park bond monies were held hostage by the Governor. He didn't spend any of them yet. He's trying to get the water bond done. That's part of his leverage to get the water bond on the ballot, and to force the Democrats and the environmentalists to work with him on a water bond, because he's holding their parks' money hostage. And so ideally, if the water bond goes on the ballot in February, then in March and April, they'll divvy up the parks' money and put it in the budget, and we should be able to show the concrete results from that money, getting money for Glendale. So I would say that's a nutshell of the highlights, lowlights of what's taken place over the last three months since we were last together, and we'll be back here at the end of the year, and we'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments, suggestions.
Please let us know when you need us to come up there. I don't think any of us have recently been to Sacramento in the last fiscal year, but let us know if there's anything we can do to help get those grants in. And we saw a brief report from the city of San Fernando that gets grant money like it's going out of style, so I think that's who we should emulate in terms of setting our goals. They've got it for parks, for pools, for streets, for roads, so let us know if we can apply some of the type of political pressure that they are able to apply.
Absolutely, and in fairness, I will get that report and go through. I know with us, with where we started, the challenge has been with a lot of these funds that just haven't been giving out the money yet. So with clients we've worked with for three or four years, that stuff's come to fruition. But, I mean, no excuses, we're going to get your money, that's our job, and we appreciate your commitment to doing that. We never want to waste your time or show. We'll make sure it makes sense and makes value, and I think that time will be coming up in the spring is when I see that happening. In the meantime, we'll probably have a couple of district meetings during the recess with Assembly Member Kocorian, Senator Scott, to refocus on a couple of these pending applications where they can make calls into the Governor and push, and that might, I don't necessarily need you to Sacramento, but perhaps joining us at that meeting for that focus would be great.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Sad?
Question. Last time you were here, we brought up an issue that dealt with the way different housing agencies, different districts figure out how the rent supplements work, and everybody has a different formula, and so on and so forth, and I think you took time to go down and talk to the city's staff and recommend one of those changes to Jack Scott, so they can actually put together legislation. This is something that not just our city, everybody else in the state of California has to deal with. Did anything come out of that?
The answer is yes, and I don't know the answer, because Jennifer Thompson was the orchestrator, and I apologize, that's, I take responsibility. She's up in Sacramento on the water bond negotiations right now. She did follow up with your staff on the feedback on that. We're also working on transitory development guidelines and what would qualify and not. Those guidelines are still in process with housing and community development, and we're working closely, so whatever comments she got from the city are in, and we're still working that. On that other item, though, and I do recall it, and I have to apologize, I did not look ahead to make sure I had the detail on that, and Jennifer's the one that did.
You can send us a.
I'll get something to the city manager right away and to share.
The other thing is, our city, among legal California cities, sent a letter to the state opposing a legislation, I think it's 1404 or something of that nature, something of that nature, that dealt with affordable housing or mixed-use housing, that you could not do it, or so on and so forth. It was very bad legislation. Do you know whatever happened to that?
I am going to tell you in a second. Am I, I have a gut on that. Heather's going through the matrix of the bills. I believe that bill, what's happened now, one of the challenges with term limits in our legislature, is members have a hard time saying no to each other when someone wants to get something done. So you hear a lot of what are questionable to bad bills get through the process because everyone else is holding the other bills hostage, and a lot of stuff, and I believe this is one of them, I mean, we've weighed in opposition, may it, kind of makes it through, they're counting on the Governor to veto it. A lot of stuff just goes to the Governor's desk between the legislators, and then they let the Governor pick and choose. I'll get that back to you. Is it in that?
Okay.
It's different than the one we were working on.
Could you please let us know what happened, because that is something that the League took a very strong stand. We took a strong stand, I think, a lot, that's just a bad bill.
Right.
So if we need to, we may have to write a letter to the Governor's office.
Make sure that happens.
Yeah, so let us know on that thing. On the water bill, is this something that was proposed a while back to deal with Sacramento Delta and deal with some of the stuff? Is that what we're hearing about all these ads in the radio and television?
Ads in radio, TV you're seeing, which are supported by the Governor and the proponents, is to basically overcome a concern they have with the average voter in terms of apathy, which is, as long as I go home every night, turn on the tap, there's water, there must not be a water crisis, so I don't really care, I'm not thinking about it. Not unlike the electricity thing, no one cared about it until we had blackouts and brownouts, and then we scrambled. They tried to, for, prior to Hurricane Katrina, there's always been the water wars in famous California about how we manage our water, and for all our technology and for all our sophistication, the sad truth is, one of the most sophisticated water storage devices we have is the snowpack in the Sierras. And we count on the snow to be there and to melt at just the right rate so it flows and gets to the places it needs to be. And now, in an environment of climate change, global warming, whatever you want to call it, and whether or not, whose fault it is or isn't, and whether it's natural or man-made, the point is, more's melting quicker and faster, and we don't have, you know, service storage advocates argue, we don't have enough surface storage to contain it when we have big runoff, and it's just going right through to the sea. And we have problems with the delta, we saw a failure of one levee and the disruption it could create, and then we saw what happened in Katrina, and thinking here is not so necessarily a hurricane, but a major earthquake, what could that do to the levees, and that could disrupt a significant amount of water that comes down here. On top of the fact that our Colorado River water allocation had to be reduced as part of a recent negotiations agreement, and on top of that, the Colorado River is, I won't say it's running dry, but it's running, you know, at a 50-year drought level. So we're kind of having a, excuse the bad analogy, a perfect storm of a lot of things coming together that create a drought-type environment, and you will actually be seeing more aggressive public information campaigns conducted by folks. You know, Long Beach just decided to go on a full drought warning system. Mayor Rigoso decided not to yet, but you're going to see more of that. So that's what kind of, I think, brought the issue to fore. The Governor, to his credit, I mean, this is an issue he has gotten very passionate with, and he's very adamant about, and he's chosen to make it one of the issues, and he's advocated effectively for it, and that's, I think, the main reason why we're at where we're at today. But, you know, we've forced it to work with a lot of water districts, we're familiar with it, still more to be played out, but the ads you're seeing now are all to create a climate to get the legislature to push to deal with it now before it becomes more of a crisis. That's the spirit.
Do you anticipate what the amount is?
I anticipate an amount that could be as high as close to $10 billion.
$10 billion?
$10 billion. And part of that is because of the, and some of them will argue that's well less than what the need may be two, three times that. That would be what the state puts in, and that would still require equal or more contributions from local end-users, whether it's regional agencies like Metropolitan Water and its member agencies, or retail districts, or other contractors to the state water system. But for surface, right now, the Governor is now is putting in for three surface storage projects. Temperance Flats, which is the, outside of Fresno, Yosemite area, Los Vaqueros, and then a new one that's called Sites, which would be, now unlike if any of you have done the Met tour to Diamond Valley Lake, how they built a reservoir, you know, out of the mountains, that's what Sites is up in Northern California. And that alone, they're looking at spending, Governor's now pushing for over $5, $5.5 billion just for that. We're looking at $2 billion then for what would be local water management programs that you would be eligible for, another half billion on top of that for groundwater programs, and there's another billion for delta issues in terms of the environmental stuff and the fish and all that stuff, and then there's another billion or so on what we're going to do or not do on the peripheral canal, that no one wants to call peripheral canal, but what's the, what's the way we get water, have a guaranteed way of getting water past the delta down here to the south, the people who need it to drink. Sorry to go off on a tear on that, but that's, you'll probably see a lot of it over the next three weeks, and we'll be working closely with your staff on that. But I think it would be the most serious water investment the state's made since Pat Brown was Governor, and the Governor's taking his governorship on it right now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Draymond?
Well, Mr. Townsend, I don't know you, I haven't met you before, but, because I'm new here, but I just wanted to say, you must be very good at what you do, because to stand with a straight face and say, and describe a 50-year drought condition as a perfect storm.
It's a dry storm. Yeah, I'm sorry. I guess it's the salesman, and it's, I mean, part of the problem we have is, you know, when there's the crisis or when we can get the focus in today's society, we move so quickly. And it's the challenge with term limits. You know, in the old, 20 years ago, you'd have members that that's all they cared about was water, and everyone else respected them, not unlike what we do in Congress. You know, Grace De Palatano has a very important role, chairing the Federal Water Committee, and she'll always be there doing that. Here, 39 of the 80 Assembly Members are freshmen, brand new, never even been in the legislature. And so there's someone supposed to pick up the mantle and talk about water resource issues that for 50, 100 years down the road is, can be a challenge. And that's why, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Mayor, we will definitely be taking a bit of, and that's what we need. We need the local voices here at the right time making the message heard.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Appreciate you coming down and giving us the update. Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next item, please.
3D is Service Award Presentation to Paul Keel, Senior Administrative Analyst, Risk Management for 25 Years with the City.
Who is going to come forward?
It's like Paul Keel.
Tom, introduce yourself if you would.
My name is Tom Mulley. I am the Risk Manager for the City of Glendale. Very pleased this evening to introduce Mr. Paul Keel of Administrative Services Department, Risk Management Section, on completing 25 years with the city. Paul and his wife just celebrated their 25th anniversary on September 11th. Kathy, his wife, a school administrator and a kindergarten teacher, have two children. Mitchell, 14, freshman in high school, who is a wide receiver for the school's football team. Megan, 11, intermediate school, is very active in ice skating and will start competing next month in this sport. Let's also note that Paul is a diehard Los Angeles Lakers fan, something he brings up to us pretty much every day the season is ongoing. The entire family, whenever they can, enjoy spending time at their place in Palm Desert. Paul started with the city July 1981 as an hourly employee. In August of '82, he became a full-time employee. From '82 to '87, he split his time between the Finance and the Police Department. In Finance, he was responsible for fixed asset accounting. In Police, he was responsible for their dispatch and records management computer systems. You did that on purpose? I mean, that was the plan?
Well, at the direction of others who are no longer with us.
Okay. Then from '87 to '91, he transferred to the Personnel Division, Safety Section, working on his safety programs 20 hours a week. Then he transferred to Finance full-time and continued his responsibility. continued his responsibilities for fixed assets, worked in an Internal Audit Section for about 10 years, and working in Finance, he also worked on redevelopment financial issues. January of 2004, he was transferred to the Risk Management Section with responsibilities for insurance procurement and property claims. Now Paul is responsible for managing our Insurance Services Section, which provides for the procurement of insurance programs. Due to his tenacity and strong work ethic, he does an excellent job, so we added liability claims to his responsibility pack. Last year, responsibility for all insurance approvals was transferred from Legal to Risk Management. This includes insurance for all city contracts, purchase orders, and permits. Paul is doing a superb job of handling all insurance approvals and resolving issues with our vendors, contractors, and permit applicants and their insurance agents. Paul provides insurance and risk consulting to the departments for all types of issues, including capital projects and city operations. With Paul's proven track record last year in August, I gave him the responsibility of setting up and managing our newest section of Risk Management, Enterprise Services. This is a revenue-generating section that provides passport acceptance, live-scan fingerprinting, and child, older adult identification kits. And finally, with the success in Enterprise Services, we're in the process of developing a plan to expand filming in the city and identify new revenue opportunities from the film industry. It is with great pleasure I introduce Mr. Paul Keel.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Starbrenn, everybody else. It's great pleasure to work for the city. As most of us know, it's a real good place to work. I've been very fortunate that I've had a lot of different job assignments. I've worked at a lot of different departments on lots of different things. And now, for the last four years or so, I've been assigned to Risk Management, Insurance. I work for an excellent boss, Tom, our Risk Manager. I work with each of the departments, hopefully solving problems, not creating problems. I have an excellent staff that I'm very fortunate to be responsible for, and all this part. Let's see. The other thing that is Risk Management, we're a new group, we have lots of different things that we do. It's kind of conflicted in that we handle insurance and risk issues, we handle workers' comp, or Tom does, safety, and then we have Enterprise Services, which is kind of the other side of the realm where we try to save money in our other tasks. Enterprise, we try to generate income, which I think we're doing. So that's kind of exciting, a little different than most departments. We save it, we try to earn it for everyone. I'm very fortunate that my staff has really made our first year in Enterprise very successful with the support of everyone here. Thank you very much for the support. And with that, again, thank you. If you need a passport or fingerprinting, come see us, we're there. I think that's the other thing, many of you in here have...
Notary Services.
Oh, yes, and Notary Services. But many of you have already been in and utilized our services, so I think everybody got their passport and they've gone where they wanted to go. So with that, thank you again for the opportunity to work here, and that's it.
Thank you, Paul. I know you from, I know you're from the Passport Office, and I had no idea that you had such a lengthy and diverse series of positions with the city. And we'd like to celebrate that. And Mr. Weaver, if you'll present the certificate and the goodies.
There's goodies.
Okay.
Paul, you can bring this to your office.
Hey. I don't have one of these. This will look very nice on the wall. Thank you.
Your traditional pin. I think this one has, Christopher, yes, got that little diamond.
That it does.
You can't retire on it.
Uh, no, no, it's got two more years to go.
Oh, and this, as Mr. Starbrenn says, does not go to you, goes to your spouse.
Well, my spouse isn't here tonight, but I think she's watching at home, so I'll make sure it gets home.
Yeah, please.
So, thank you very much.
And your son plays wide receiver?
Yes.
He likes football?
Yes, he does.
What's his favorite college?
USC.
Good man, good man.
A little bit of luck, that's where he'll go to school. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Mr. Drayman.
Oh, not quite so fast, Paul.
Oh, I was hoping we could avoid this. No, I should say, before John speaks, John and I went to school together for many years, so our paths have crossed numerous times as we grew up. And he was also most gracious to allow us to put on our promotional booth last Sunday at the farmer's market. So that was a very successful afternoon for our staff, so thank you very much.
All right, enough of these niceties.
Okay, your turn.
Well, in high school, Paul, we knew, we knew you'd come to no good.
This is true.
And apparently, we could have bet you would have ended up in Risk or Management. Just kidding. Paul, for those of you who haven't known him long, I know all of you probably have, but for those watching, Paul is an absolutely wonderful, dedicated, honest, decent guy. Has been, always. And I'm just very happy and I feel lucky that our paths have crossed again at this stage where I am sort of on board on your turf. But I also want to express a thank you from a group that I used to be president of, and that was the Montrose Shopping Park Association, because for those of you who enjoy any of the programs there that the shopping park presents, about a dozen of them per year, when we came to a crashing insurance impasse, it was Paul that helped the shopping park win their way through that, helped get us to the appropriate parties, and lo and behold, we were able, we were back in business. And so that was a terrific thing. And boy, oh boy, does the community thank you. So, and so do I. So thank you, Paul.
It's a great pleasure to help.
Yeah, absolutely.
I hope you get, I hope you get some air conditioning over there one of these days.
Well, yes, at Camp Risk Management, air conditioning is hard to find, but hopefully in the...
I just made a plug for it.
Yes, I know. And for those who don't know, in the old police building where Enterprise Services is located, and they're open now, but air conditioning is not working, so it gets a little warm. It pushes 85-plus degrees in there, but...
I think staff just heard that.
But I will tell you that Steve Zern and his staff have been trying to help us with the best that they can. So we've gotten some relief. So, thank you, Steve. But, so anyways, thank you very much. I appreciate it, Dave. Thank you, Ed.
Mr. Kasakian, the next item.
At 3:00 CE, sorry, E looked like a C, Presentation of Check by Whole Foods Store to Pals Program.
Captain?
Oh, that takes care of part of the...
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, we have part of our Police Activities League here tonight, and representatives from Whole Foods be presenting a check. Along with us, we have Sergeant Oscar Rodriguez. Besides overseeing our school resource officers, Oscar really runs the boxing program, a very integral part of Police Activities League. We also have Officer Renee Kerner. Renee oversees our equestrian program, and I'd like Renee to come up, and she will introduce those she's brought with her today and accept the check for us and introduce the Whole Foods people.
Hi, good evening. You've seen me here before asking for money. Well, thanks, and now we get more. Our program is basically, as you know, funded by the Community Development and Housing, that grant. And we, over the summer, we were offered so generously by Becky Feliciano of Whole Foods for, to be chosen as their program, where they give back to the community 5% of an entire day's sale. We are just so blessed to have been picked and to work with her. She was absolutely fantastic. Everyone in the store was so wonderful to us, and we just say thank you so much. And where the funds go, I brought some of the kids for our equestrian program, and we're really, really good. This is Elizabeth Harris and Sally Morris. We have Jamie Waldron, Priscilla Eugenio, and Jamila Jabali. This is just five of the 16 kids that we have in our equestrian program. Becky?
Good evening. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to work with such a wonderful member of our community and such a fantastic program. We're pleased to be a part of it. And we would like to present you with the Jumbo Check.
Tom, how much is it?
It's for $5,199.75.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Ms. Feliciano and Whole Foods, for being such an important part of our community, and officers for conducting the different activities. And I love the outfits you have, the Western theme with the scarves. I think that's really snappy. Oh, those are nice belts, too. Very snappy. I don't know who picked that out or who designed it, but it's very nice. I think quite fitting of an excellent equestrian program. I'm sure the boxers wear something a little different. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, ladies, gentlemen, for coming down. Next item, Mr. Kasakian.
Mr. Mayor and Council, next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Quintero.
Yes, I want to make a few comments over the weekend. I had the opportunity to go to the Armenia Independence Celebration. I want to congratulate the Armenian Council of America. They've been doing it for years and years. It's always, it literally gets better every year. Really a very nice event, very well done, and very impressed. Like I say, they just keep building on their, on their success. Then I went up to Montrose for the Classic Car Show, and that was also an excellent event. I hope a little more PR is done so that we'll get more and more people up there, because the cars, unlike the show we do on Brand Boulevard, it's really classic, classic cars. So they've really got some, no hot rods allowed, but anyway, it was great. And then finally, I want to congratulate and thank Myrna Stanley and Minerva Astengo. They put together a fundraiser for our hometown banners, hometown heroes banner. We had, I think about $2,000 were actually raised in that one event. So they did a tremendous job. It was originally scheduled for Saturday. It rained, so it had to be moved to Sunday. But it was a great event, and already we have three names to put up on the banners. And the parents, the grandmother of one particular person, but there are three young men that are in the combat zones, all of them in Iraq, I believe. And I know how excited they're going to be when their names go up on the streets of Glendale, and then hopefully we'll be able to bring them to the lectern when they get home safely. So it was just a great event, and those two women went out of their way to host the event, and just wanted to let the public know about it, and not to forget that you can always contribute money to help pay for those banners.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Yusefian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I still don't know if the staff does need to come back to us. Did we determine what the cost of those banners are?
I think they're $150.
I think the program's coming back, though.
The program's coming back. The direction was to refer to the Citizenship and Patriotism Committee, allow them to work on the details with staff, and we'll bring you back a full report for implementation. I'm not sure of the timing. We'll get a date set tomorrow at goal, so we can get it on your tentative list, but that was your direction.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, because I'd like to know what the cost is going to be per banner, because as I said, I would like to buy some of those, but I need to know what they are so I can make my contribution.
They were $10,000.
I don't think it was. I don't think that's where I'm going to go. The second thing is I also took the opportunity to go to the 16th anniversary of the Armenian Independence Day. Both me and our mayor were there, but we didn't walk away untouched. We left some DNA samples at a bone marrow place. So I walked in there to just shake hands, and next thing I know, I fill in an application, and they're taking swats of my DNA for the people who have cancer of the Armenian ancestry. And they tried to match your DNA with their DNA, so maybe they can save lives. So Mr. Mayor was there first, so I watched to make sure what that is, and since he walked away in one piece, I figured, nah, what the heck, I'll go there again. But that's basically what I did, and besides, a lot of honeydews at home. But it was interesting event. There were a lot of people there, very orderly. There were several individuals who came over and asked questions about the fact that the parking on the street was basically blocked off, no street parking at all. There was some comments that is this done because of this event? And, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Zern, we do this typically with all events that are large events. Our goal is to make sure that in case there's an emergency exit, the roads are open. Did I give them the right answer? Thank you. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman?
I have a couple of announcements, comments. Actually, the one I wasn't going to make because I thought our city clerk would be making it, because Mr. Kasakian is a student of American history and often reminds us about important moments in American history past, today being the anniversary of the adoption of the Bill of Rights. So I thought I would mention that, since he did not.
Or you missed your chance.
You stopped believing in the Bill of Rights.
I doubt that. Second announcement is, I need to announce is our representative to the Arroyo Verdego Subregion Group, that Councilmember Bob Yusefian was, is now our official SCAG RC Representative, SCAG meaning Southern California area, Association of Cities.
Association of Government.
Of government, sorry. And he is our new representative, replacing or filling out the term of Todd Campbell from Burbank, which will end May of 2008. So, did you know it was that long?
Ah, yes, just with his three years. Not too many people last that long, but that's okay.
Then, next, I want to, I have a couple of things here related to the recent newspaper article this morning that everyone has been chatting about. First of all, I have a notice here that I want to post. There we go. It says, I don't know if you can see that on camera, there you go. Room for rent, is what it says.
Mrs. Nahabidian wants that.
I was just going to say, there's a number of groups that have contacted me, wanting to know if that space was available. So you may contact me at my city email. And I thought I would encourage the public, as a humorous note, to see who can come up with the most creative use of that space. What is the size of our offices? Not you, Mr. Mayor, you have a large office.
Seven by 14.
Seven by 14. So basically the size of a prison cell, I think.
We like to give it...
How much?
We like to give it seven.
In centimeters, it sounds larger, so...
It's seven by seven, so...
So what is it now? It's seven by...
Seven by 14.
Seven by 14. So I'd like to know, those of you here, or those of you watching at home, would like to contact me and let me know your most creative suggestion for the use of that office space, seven by 14. So put on your creative thinking hats, caps. And the other thing about this, my colleagues and former gladiators, my gladiator friend, Mr. Yusefian here to my right, who I will from now refer to lovingly as Babus Yuseficus Gladiator.
Sounds good.
And I would like to announce, based on the notion of, if you want love, buy a dog, get a dog.
You have one.
I have one.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Number one. Number two, though, I've contacted the Glendale Humane Society, their executive director, and have let her know that I am going to be sponsoring, not adopting, but sponsoring five dogs to share that love with my colleagues. Five dogs, one for each of my council colleagues. Some of you have dogs, I know. But these are sponsored animals, so that...
And some have cats.
And some have cats, yes.
Scratch.
That's right. But cats were not mentioned in the article, only dogs. So I want to share the love... So I want to share the love, and we're going to sponsor, I'm going to sponsor five dogs from the Glendale Humane Shelter, one for each of my colleagues, and your name will be a sponsor that will basically provide, if it were, if you would like, endowment care to take care of these animals until they find a forever home, as the Humane Society calls it. As you know, Glendale is one of the few no-kill shelters in the region, and so these funds help sponsor the care of those animals until they find their home. So we're going to find a nice chihuahua or something for you, Mr. Yusefian, and we're going to name him or her Babus Yuseficus Gladiator.
No, no, I don't do chihuahuas. My parents have one. Let's fix something else.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, do you have anything?
No comments.
Okay.
Let's get on with the show.
I just have a few. I'd like to remind everyone that even though we did have a little bit of rainfall over the weekend, that we're still really in some bad drought conditions. So don't give up your water-saving efforts. We cut our water use by just several percentage points last month. We are shooting for 10%. That's a voluntary conservation. So let's all keep up the good work. The next item I'd like to mention is to announce that on October 13th, the City of Glendale will host the Sixth Annual Unity Fest Celebration. It will be held at Verdugo Park from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The event is a festival representing the diverse cultures of our community, filled with international foods, arts and crafts booths, and a full day of entertainment will highlight this year's events. And we are happy to announce that, for the first time, the nationally renowned musical group, Element Band, will be performing. Element Band is a rock-jazz fusion, a very melodious performance, and their first album, Yevofe, captured the 2006 Armenian Music Awards Best Newcomer category. And in addition to entertainment, there will be children's games and activities. Admission and parking are free. And for more information, please call 818-548-6464, and you will probably see the mayor and several councilmen and some other high-level staff attending to mingle with the crowd and answer any questions, or enjoy the music and the food with the residents there. So October 13th, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
The Relay for Life.
And my last item. Last week, we had a little discussion about the extra reimbursement that the mayor gets on a monthly basis, $150 a month, and I promised that regardless of how the opinion comes from Mr. Howard as to whether my ascension and appointment to the mayor position was legal or not, that I would be donating some of those funds back to a local charity. I'm happy to announce that I have a check for the American Cancer Society, and we have some representatives for the Glendale Relay of Life, whose proceeds benefit the American Cancer Society, Linda Patrick and Mike Haney. Is Chief Scoggins in?
Your problem.
Why don't you all three come up, our tri-chairs? And Mr. Howard, please verify the funds that are being submitted.
I can tell you what the check is for, I can't verify the funds.
Would you like a telephone?
We'll see how much it stretches.
And this is on behalf of the entire City Council.
Thank you.
And you have an event coming up, correct? Are you going to speak later?
Yeah.
Okay, so we won't get into that now, but congratulations.
Thank you.
And we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, everybody. We'll talk to you in a little while.
And if there are no other comments, any comments from staff? Okay, let's move on to the next item, please.
Five is consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
And I do have several requests before I entertain a motion, to pull items 5E and 5F. So if someone would like to move the calendar.
Just made there's an error in the meeting, I mean, in the minutes.
Okay, we'll pull the minutes 5A.
So that. Hold what's left.
B, C, D, and G.
Seconds.
Okay. Roll call on those items.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Let's go to 5A. Mr. Yusefian?
The minutes on first page, 5A, it says regular business agenda, 608. It says roll call, Yusefian absent. Councilmember Yusefian entered the chambers at 8:10. It's actually 6:10.
Okay, the minutes will stand corrected in that fashion. Any other comments in 5A?
With that, I'll move the approval of the corrected minutes.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. The next is 5E, and I have speakers, two speakers. Mr. Allen is first, followed by Mr., excuse me, Dr. Espiritu.
Would you like me to read you into the record?
Yes, read the item as they approach.
5E is interim fire chief regarding urban area security program. That's UASI, Alliance Grant for Catastrophic Event Planning. At 1 is resolution appropriating $241,665.
Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Ammon with Vanguardians. The, I think it's great that we're going to be picking up $241,000. It's a great gift. But the thing that I did not see in the staff report was whether this also covered position coverage overtime, or just the overtime of those personnel who will be working in this particular program, being trained and the other things. Position coverage overtime is different than the overtime that they may be receiving for working on this. Those would be the people who would be covering their shifts, if there are any, and I was quite surprised to see that being missed from the staff report. So I think that would be necessary, but again, it's great to get that $241,000. I'm Barry Ammon, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Espiritu?
Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff, I am Dr. Richard Espiritu. On August the 26th, 2004, a grant assurance of Urban Area Security Initiative was signed by the City of Los Angeles and the City of Glendale. It was signed by a gentleman by the name of Pat Canfield. Paragraph four, subparagraph A, talks about the California Disaster and Civil Defense Master Mutual Aid Agreement. This agreement seems to have been already in place since August the 26th of 2004. Now, in the three years from 2004 to 2007, haven't we worked out these plans? Besides which, over the period of years, we have received large sums of money, something in excess of $13 million, for various types of programs for natural disaster. I have a copy of that, Mr. Yusefian, okay? I just wonder, what are we doing? Are we reinventing the wheel a second time? I'd like an answer to that question. Thank you very much.
Be reinventing the wheel a second time? And do we have a UAWSE representative here? Chief Scoggins?
I see Chief Scoggins sitting back there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Harold Scoggins, Fire Department. I'm really not sure what exactly Mr. Espiritu's talking about from 2004, but over the years, there have been a number of grants awarded to the Glendale Fire Department, and they've gone to many different things, such as equipment and training, and just so many different things, that we've been really, we've really been able to be prepared in the case of an emergency. On the one point earlier, Mr. Allen's question, does the grant of that amount of money cover the position coverage? It covers all the overtime of the person gone and the backfill behind him. But Julie Schaefer is here, and she can kind of give you a brief accounting of a number of different grants that we've had over the years, and it'll give you a bit of understanding. Julie?
Briefly, briefly, Ms. Schaefer.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, could you answer the $13 million issue?
Um, we haven't.
Add up to that amount.
We haven't quite received $13 million, but we have received quite a bit. And my interpretation of what I believe the doctor was bringing up involving the Master Mutual Aid Plan, we're not reinventing the wheel. That already existed. The grants are for different, we're developing different mutual aid in specific events, natural or terrorism events. It has nothing to do with the Master Mutual Aid Plan. Has to do if something happens catastrophically to the operational area.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Yusefian?
I'd like to know, she says we have received so much, but how much? Not $13 million? What, we got $1 million, five?
I can make an approximation, and I'm going to guess around $9 million.
$9 million, thank you.
That's not just one grant, that's just a variety.
Correct. That goes back to, that goes back to grant year of 2001 to present.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Move 5E.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. 5F, please.
5F is Director of Public Works regarding Extension of Professional Services Agreement with the City of Burbank for the Maintenance of Traffic-Related Electrical Devices. At F1 is motion authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the existing professional services agreement, number C103959, to extend services through June 30th, 2008.
I have a card from Mike Nagel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and citizens of Glendale. I have a question concerning this contract. I read the proposed contract amendment that was published on the city's website, and I found mention of crossing signals, traffic lights, and also the lights on the, that are embedded in the streets, on the crosswalks, but it had no mention at all of audible signals. Now, it's true that up to about a year ago, we had no audible signals here. Is Burbank going to be responsible for those, for the maintenance of those as well? And if not, why not?
Thank you. Will Burbank, when we get audible signals?
We do have, Mr. Mayor, we do have.
Will they be responsible for the maintenance?
They have been, and they will continue to be, yes.
And are they competent to maintain it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Yusefian?
A while back, we converted a lot of our signals to diode technology.
LED.
LEDs. Are all of them converted now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what we were sold at the time was, they have a life expectancy of 10 years. Are they living up to their?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, councilmember Yusefian, it has been about seven years, and we're seeing some of the early ones that are ready for replacement. So it's not quite the 10. It has lasted. We are seeing, though, I will admit, we are seeing substantial energy savings as a result of that, and are working with GWP and getting some of our energy use figures in. We are saving energy on those. It appears, though, like electric, like standard bulbs, they can give a standard life, but some last a little bit longer, some last not quite as long. So we're seeing some of them are ready for replacement now, but they have proven to be very effective.
And on this contract with Burbank, have they performed so far? We've used them for a while. Are you satisfied with their performance? They're on time? They do a good job?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, councilmember Yusefian, yes. We've used them since 1993. We've been happy with their performance.
And this is another, Mr. Mayor, this is another one of our projects that we share with our neighbor that saves money for us and also for them, and we do other things for them, or other cities, like with meters and so on and so forth. So with that, I'd like to move 5F.
Second. Mr. Starbuck?
Well, I just want to point out, we have this project and others with Burbank that we've worked cooperatively with for many years. We are, however, at the same time as we speak, soliciting proposals to double-check the actual costs against the marketplace, to make sure that this is the most cost-effective means of providing our traffic maintenance, so. And that'll be coming back to you toward the end of this year, Steve.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's take roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. The next item, please.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and a report.
Ladies and gentlemen, by ordinance, you are permitted to speak five minutes during oral communications, and you're certainly welcome to use that time. However, if you choose to limit your remarks voluntarily to three minutes, I can in turn place you near the front of the, front of the pack of speakers and give you priority. We are going to start with the three-minute takers, and then move on to the five-minute until such time as 60 minutes elapses, excluding comments and questions from staff or council members. It's approximately 7:15. Once we, if anyone is cut off and put to the late show, we will resume with their speaking, right to speak after the action items and public hearings are concluded. The first speaker for three minutes is Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. Six weeks ago, Mayor, you announced to the City of Glendale residents a voluntary water conservation program, suggesting a 10% reduction in water. Today, you gave us a little bit of an update as to how well we're doing with regard to that 10% reduction. And the reason why I bring it up to your attention again is that I think that we need a monthly report on how well we're doing towards that goal for two reasons. We have 51 projects that are already either approved or in the process of construction, one and a half miles from Central and the 134 freeway. And those 51 projects will consume annually 307 million gallons of water, 307 million. And I know that we have a surplus, but it looks from some calculations that we're going to be hitting on that particular surplus without the other announcements we heard today concerning a 50-year drought level with regard to water that's coming from the Colorado River. And I also read that the governor might impose mandatory allocations to 23 million users. So given those drought conditions, and given the additional number of dwelling units that is being proposed for the City of Glendale, which are going to bring in 10,000 new residents, I would love to see the city apply some of Title IV of California Code of Regulations concerning plumbing and water conservations on these new projects. I made inquiries to see if there are any new requirements for these new projects that would be different from what we currently have for residents, and there are none. And I figure that we are missing a significant opportunity to bring new technologies to all of these new projects, so that they consume less water than we normally do under normal circumstances for buildings that were built a long time ago. From the information that I obtained from the environmental impact reports, at a very minimum, the consumption for some of these dwelling units is 200 gallons per day, and more than 300 gallons as well. So it would be interesting to have, I think, targets, maybe 50 gallons per day per person for these new projects, and new technologies to be applied. Because if we are going to demand for the residents of Glendale to consume... Because if we are going to demand for the residents of Glendale to conserve water, it would seem very logical for us to impose on new projects a much tighter restriction on the use of that water. Thank you very much.
Assistant Chief Harold Scoggins and Zaven Kazazian, followed by Linda Patrick.
Well, good evening again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Once again, I'm Harold Scoggins, Glendale Fire Department, and I'm with Zaven Kazazian tonight, and we're here to announce once again our second annual partnership, our Glendale Fire Department Awards Luncheon. This awards luncheon is going to be recognizing members of the fire department as well as the community on October 12th at Oakmont Country Club from 11:30 to 2:30. This is a joint venture, and this is our second year joining up to do it, and we think some, some real positive things are coming out of it. There's a number of different ways to attend. You can sponsor an individual, you can sponsor a table, or you can even get the, the larger sponsorship. And this year, what we've done with the larger sponsorship is called it a CERT-level sponsorship. If a business, organization, homeowners group, or anything like that in the community sponsors one of our larger sponsorships, we'll have our fire department CERT team come out and teach CERT to 20 members of your organization, your homeowners group, or whatever it may be. We just feel this is a continued effort to get out and reach the community with disaster preparedness.
Mayor Najarian, city councilman, Mr. Starburn, and staff. Well, Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club is extremely pleased to join again with the Glendale Fire Department to sponsor the awards luncheon. And we would like to invite the council and the public to come and join us. I think this would be a terrific opportunity. Please, in all of your travels, please talk it up. It's October 12th at the Oakmont Country Club. It's a terrific event, one, extremely wonderful people we're going to be honoring. We're also going to be honoring some volunteers, and we have a special award that we are also going to be presenting that, at this point in time, I cannot disclose it yet. It's the suspense of the day, so please come, and so that we can have, and then you can be participating and be part of that. So, we can count on you. I know you all of you have received invitations, and we have just given you some more flyers. Please come on out and join us, and this would be a terrific event. If there's any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer. And this is put on by the Glendale Sunrise Rotary- This is put on by the Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club and the fire department. And the fire department. And, by the way, we'll also like to give a phone number, 818-550-5616. Please give us a call. Come on down and take a look at the wonderful event that's going to be, and let's join each other and celebrate. Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Linda Patrick, followed by Dave Ahern.
Good evening. My name is Linda Patrick, and I'm co-chair for the Glendale Relay for Life. I'm here with my two other co-chairs, Mike Haney and Harold Scoggins, and our event is this Saturday, September 29th. We start our opening ceremonies at 10:00 AM. We're here to invite you and to thank you, once again, everyone here, on the dais especially, and the departments, every department in this city practically has been joining us in this effort, and we're inviting survivors to please come to the event, join us. We have a special survivor's lap at about 10:30, where we honor survivors, cancer survivors. I'll let Harold and Mike speak to you, and once again, thank you for your donation.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for always supporting this great event. It's one of the key, key ingredients for fundraising for the American Cancer Society for Glendale. Last year, we raised $150,000. This year, we have $200,000 as our goal, and it's just such a great event, and we really appreciate all the support. And we already have committed $40,000 in sponsorships and $40,000 online, so we're at $80,000, so we approximately $120,000 ago, and it's just, we have 38 teams, and so it's going to be a great event, and we'll see you on Saturday.
Well, good evening, once again. You know, the, the excitement is finally, you know, it's getting here. We've been planning this for, for such a long time. It's really going to be an outstanding event this year. We really, we really have a lot of involvement from the community as well as, as the city and businesses in the community. But one thing I will say, if you can't make the entire day, I think it's really important to come for the luminarias event at night, about nine o'clock. And that's when we just take a moment to just remember those who have lost a battle with cancer, and to really honor those who are still fighting the fight. That's when all the lights go down, we have a few songs, we have a special guest speaker. This year, I'm proud to say it's, it's my cousin. He's a, he's a colon retro doctor, and he's going to be our guest speaker at the event. He lost his father to cancer. I lost my father and my mother to cancer, so it's in our family. So, I'm real proud of that. I think it'll be a very special evening and event, so really want to encourage everyone. If you haven't registered, that's okay. Show up on Saturday. We'll get you registered. If you want to come and walk around and check it out, come on up. We invite the whole community to come on up and be a part of the event. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to take Dave Ahern's-
Okay.
-time he had to leave.
Let you do that?
He apologizes for having to leave. He had another meeting. My name is Annette. I'm part of the Food Divas. We are in charge of the food for Relay for Life. We recruit the sponsors, get the donations, and basically oversee the operations when it comes to concerning food. Our committee consists of Elena Bolboyan, chaired by Dave Ahern, and Monia Hunanian, and myself. And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the sponsors and the food donors, as well as let everybody know what kind of wonderful food we're going to have at this event, because there's going to be a lot of fun, but the food is also great. So, those of you who are going to be walking a lot, you're going to have to eat a lot too, and we're going to have plenty of food and drinks for our lunch. It's donated by the Jewel City Kiwanis and the Glendale Management Association. Those of you who have come, they always do a wonderful barbecue of burgers and chicken sandwiches, and it's really great. And our dinner, it will be provided by Anush Restaurant, and our sponsors are Rodney Khan, Richard Nahas, Greg Astorian, Rahim Amiri, and that's only our first dinner. Our second dinner will be sponsored and provided by Glendale City Employees Association. Drinks for the entire event, the water will be donated by the Glendale Water and Power, coffee by Starbucks, so we're all going to be caffeinated, which is good. And the soft drinks will be provided by the Glendale Police Officers Association. And my favorite part, on Sunday morning, the pancake will be provided, the pancake breakfast will be provided by the Glendale Firefighters Association, as well as Glendale Management Association. So, please be sure to stop by, especially for the breakfast. The Glendale Fire Department wakes up early, and they cook your breakfast. It's a lot of fun, and, you know, just as, you know, the chair said, this is a wonderful event, and we just work together. It brings the whole community together, and we just fight, you know, cancer. That's what we're here to do. So, join us and get some good food.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Yusefian?
Officer Mayor, I, I hate to tell my friends at the Relay for Life, since I started, as Linda Patrick brought up, the idea, and I was mayor that year, and we started that process, this will be the first time I will not be able to attend since I will be in Kansas City. But I wish you all the luck. I know it's going to be very successful. I am going to miss the nice pancakes and, and the waffles Mr. Starburn and Mr. Bob McFaul make, and all the good food, so, but I'm pretty sure many people will enjoy it, and, and I think our mayor will be the one who will be putting up the tent, over himself.
I will be there. I have a little difficulty putting up my tent, but everyone, please, if you want to do anything, if there's one event that you want to participate in, in the city of Glendale, this is really the one you should do, for several reasons. Number one, it goes to probably the best cause that we can think of in our lifetimes. It's possible, maybe, that we will find a cure for cancer, and this is one small step in that regard. But secondly, it builds our sense of community, because everyone is up there, from the young kids to the seniors, city staff. I will be there, department heads, fire, police, GWP, your neighbors, your friends. It's such a great event. If you can only come for a few hours, please come, make a small donation, walk a few laps, and see if, if the, the bug to beat cancer doesn't bite you, and encourage you to stay longer and, and to spend the night. It's an overnight campout with entertainment. It's entirely safe, patrolled, security is not even a question. Sleep out under the stars, great food. We'll have some campfires where permitted, under the appropriate receptacles. Wake up in the morning to the smell of pancakes and sizzling sausages by the fire department, right there to serve you. It's, it's really a great event, so I, please, I encourage everyone to attend this year. Thank you. Next speaker is Mike Nagel.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name is Mike Nagel. Over the last several months, many audible crossing signals have been installed here, and I'm really gratified that the city's gone to the expense of installing them, and thank Steve Zern for that. However, they aren't adequate. They are not properly installed. They're, for instance, at the intersection closest to where I live, which is Glendale Avenue and Chevy Chase, Chevy Chase Drive, I mean, audible signals have been installed there. In the first place, in order to use the audible signals, you have to hold the button in for three seconds, and there's no indication at all on these crossing buttons that they, that it must be held for three minutes, or three seconds, I mean, in order to actuate the audible signal. And the second thing is, the signal is barely audible. The signal must be loud enough so that it can be heard clear across the street by whoever's using it to cross. The other day, my brother was coming to visit me, and he was at the corner of Glendale and Chevy Chase, and he saw a blind man using a cane trying to cross from the south, rather, the northeast corner to the southeast corner. The signal went on, the man started to cross, but of course, Glendale and Chevy Chase do not cross at 90 degrees. He had no indication to tell him what the proper direction to cross was. He walked into the car, waiting at the light in the right lane, he managed to grow up his way around that, and then he walked into the car waiting in the left lane. There was nothing to guide this man to keep him inside the crosswalk. That is why the signal must be loud enough. Now, I understand that some people where these signals are installed might consider it some kind of inconvenience to hear a loud signal, an audible signal, they might find it disturbing. However, they are not the only people living here in Glendale, and we must keep our blind and visually impaired citizens safe. Please, adjust these signals so that they can be heard clear across the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Question for Mr. Philpott. Are you requesting three minutes or five minutes? Five, okay. That completes our three-minute priority requests, and the next speaker is Bonnie Adams under five minutes, followed by Bruce Philpott and Cynthia Lloyd-Jones.
Well, hello, everyone. I'm Bonnie Adams, resident of Glendale. I'm sure all of you are sick of hearing this, but this will be the last meeting I'm with you all until probably the first or second of November. First of all, I'd like to commend John Drayman for sponsoring these, these animals. We know, we are very well acquainted with Alice down at the shelter, who's, who is the director, and who's a lovely lady, and her volunteers. In fact, we adopted a cat from the shelter, but she had to be returned for various reasons. However, it is a no-kill shelter. It's, I've been talking about it for months, and I'm just so glad that you've stood up for them, and they really need donations and help. Now, I didn't know whether or not I was going to harangue everyone tonight, or do what I had said I was going to do, but I decided not to harangue you until I come back. So, you all get a vacation, but I'm going to give you a short crash course on guide dogs. Guide dogs do just that. They're not perfect, and there's, there, there are a lot of things that you might, you might look and say, oh, that dog's not trained, but you have no idea what a person has to go through when they, when they get a dog. When I hit that campus, I'm going to hit the ground running. Now, a seeing-eye dog is a guide dog, all right? But not all guide dogs are seeing-eye dogs. There's a difference. The seeing-eye is a trademark, a registered trademark, where a specific, it's a specific school. There are lots of schools in the country, and there are little differences between each school in how they do it. One thing I need you to know is that never, ever, ever, just reach out and pet a dog. Anyway, no one should ever walk up to an animal without knowing whether it's going to be friendly or not. You must ask the owner. It's imperative that you ask the owner, and a lot of times, the owner will say, no, I don't want you to pet my dog, because, because it's, it doesn't matter what the reason is. They don't want you to pet their dog. Now, I'm a little, I'm a lot more liberal than most people, because I have 40, over 40 years of experience. So, I do things differently than a lot of people do. Now, there are people that really will not let you pet their dogs. They have their own reasons, and don't take it personally. If they don't want you to touch their dog, you never touch their dog. Now, when I come back, I'm going to bring the dog into council, and, you know, he's going to be part of the, or it, whatever it is, is going to be part of the family here. And I'm, I'm going to let people pet it, because my school now has different protocols, different procedures, and then a lot of other schools do, and a lot of other people do. So, I just wanted to mention that I will be back around the first and second of November, and then I'm coming back at you with request for, since you've imposed all these impact fees, I'm going to start pushing for everybody, the, the over 55 group, the 55 and over group, getting the ordinance amended again to eliminate all utility taxes. So, be prepared for that, because I'm going to start pushing you really hard. And then there are other things. I hope the audible signal issue gets solved, because it's really important to me. I'm terrified of that crossing. It's horrible. So, I will see you all next in November, so I hope you're all well and stay safe.
Thank you, Ms. Yusefian.
Bonnie, before you leave, forgive me for asking this question, but I'm not in your situation, so sometimes-
That's okay.
...I have difficulty understanding. Mr. Nagel earlier said that on audible signals, there was not a sign that tells you that you have to push the button for three seconds. As I said, forgive me, that's designed for people who are, you know, sight impaired, so how was that person supposed to see or read the sign unless you're suggesting the sign needs to be in braille?
Well-
It has to be in braille, ideally.
Okay, so there should be a little sign right by the, the button that is in braille that identifies that-
Well, first of all-
Should push that for three seconds.
You really need, once the signals are properly adjusted and so forth, you should get the word out to these groups of blind people that live, either live in Glendale or live in Burbank, because, or however you do it. in Burbank, because, or however you do it, and make sure that it's in the paper, and make sure that it's publicized. Signs can be there, but not everybody reads braille, so...
Okay. So you're asking for some type of a public education on it?
Yeah, besides, yes.
Okay.
Besides a sign, besides a signage, because some places, you know, but you've got to make them louder. You can't hear anything.
Thank you.
One thing that the dog does do is keep you at a straight line, so...
Thank you. We look forward to meeting your new family in November.
Thanks.
Bruce Philpott, followed by Cynthia Lloyd-Jones.
Sorry, I can't see that. Where's the safe word? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Majerian and members of the city council, Mr. Starbuck and staff, and the public. My name is Bruce Philpott. For years, I have researched and collected data on fire departments, particularly in the city of Glendale. My purpose being to offer some general understanding about fire operations. My hope is that this information will stimulate public discussion and debate on ways to improve overall performance and to control costs. There's an opportunity to save up to $15 million per year and increase the overall value and services rendered by the fire department. First, we all agree that we have an outstanding fire department that wants to provide the best and finest service. The Glendale Fire Department and specifically Chief Gray...
It's not appearing on the television.
The Glendale Fire Department, specifically Chief Gray, provided important leadership in developing, the development of the Fire District Area C, comprising 40 fire stations in 11 cities. By eliminating jurisdictional boundaries, they have been able to reduce response times on emergency calls. We also agree that the public has a stake in the delivery of these services, because ultimately, they are the recipients of those, and oftentimes, life-threatening emergencies. They are also the consumers who pay for them. My career in public safety covered three decades, and I served my last two years as police chief in the city of Pasadena. In their early 80s, I commanded the Support Services Division of the Pasadena Fire Department under the newly-formed Public Safety Agency. The fire chief occupied an office next to mine for several years, and that experience stimulated my interest in the fire service. After I retired, I began to meet with working and retired fire chiefs and rank-and-file firefighters over a period of five years. I will refer to them as the Career Firefighter Study Group. After reviewing the actual data of firefighters' activity, they began to come up with several new methods or models of delivering fire services to the public that would be more efficient and save lives and control costs. These models are fairly simple and easy to understand, and were developed from actual data supplied by fire departments under the Public Records Act. Fire departments and their culture of family began to form in the 19th century, and the vast majority of its benefactors, from the newest recruit to the chief, worked consciously and unconsciously to protect the status quo. Real analysis of data leading to change from inside the organization is almost impossible. David Fleming, former president of the Los Angeles City Fire Commission, in addressing problems in the Los Angeles Fire Department, said recently, quote, "The public does not understand what goes on in that department," unquote. Having spoken with Mr. Fleming personally, his statement in part means that there is little if any transparency in the fire departments. The public has a certain perception based on positive community contacts at festivals, parades, ceremonies, and elementary school visits where children climb on the fire engines, wearing the red hats and junior fire badges. Fleming is as frustrated as most, and would like for the public to have real knowledge of fire departments, because that is the only way any positive change can be made. With entry-level Glendale firefighters earning $90,000, engineers at $101,000, and captains at $120,000, all receiving on average $30,000 per year in overtime, and with an added 60% benefit package, the public has a right and a duty to look inside their fire departments and determine if they are providing the kind of cost-effective services they want. The Career Firefighter Study Group was able to break free from the traditions and culture and began to formulate new ways to deliver fire services. It is understandable that many firefighters would resist change. However, some of the best practices in the fire service are being compromised under the banner of tradition and culture. If it were not at the expense of the public safety, it probably could be tolerated. My motivation is to find ways to improve fire services the firefighters provide that will benefit the public. Glendale firefighters are a dedicated group who perform the responsibilities professionally, but as you will learn, modifying some policies would benefit both the public and emergency services and costs. With the authority of the Public Records Act, fire department operational data has been collected over the course of many years. This information is not readily offered to the public or city council, because it may alter their perceptions of the department. As a former police chief and a special assistant to the city manager in Pasadena, I believe more information makes for better decisions by decision-makers. I will present some of this data over the course of the next few months in five-minute segments.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott.
It will be presented in the perspective of sound management principles, void of the myths and traditions that are ingrained in the fire service today. It will open up valuable opportunities. The annual potential savings to Glendale is in the vicinity of between 11 and 15 million. Those innovative ideas were developed in collaboration with the Career Firefighter Study Group. With over 300 years of collective experience in the fire service, their analysis of present operations lead to several new models that would provide better and more cost-effective services to the public.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Weaver.
Next time I see David Fleming at a board meeting, I'll ask him about this.
Okay. Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The engine companies, am I, will I start here? Continue. The engine companies, usually staffed with four firefighters, are the first responders on all medical, fire, and rescue calls. Nearly 90% of their emergency calls provide backup to the paramedic ambulances. The engine arrives on average 57 seconds before the ambulance. The nine-engine companies on average respond to 4.4 calls per 24-hour shift. The four calls are for medical backup, and the 0.4 call is typically a fire call, not a fire incident, as the fire department claims. Almost all fire calls are of a minor nature and easily handled by a single-engine company. The International Association of Firefighters, which is the international firefighters' union, states that 90% of all fires can be extinguished with 500 gallons of water onboard the engine, and that 93% of all fire alarm calls are false. That leaves very few of the 1,700 annual fire calls resulting in significant events. In fact, last year, only five of the 1,700 fire calls were considered major events. Fire calls have been going down drastically over the past three decades, as new building materials, building codes, early-detection systems, and automatic sprinkler systems have become the norm. That's the good news, but the medical emergency calls are rising faster than the fire calls are declining. Medical calls have doubled over the past 20 years and will continue to climb in the foreseeable future, while fire calls have declined by about 1,000 in that same time period. The average time an engine spends on a call is 15 minutes, regardless if it is a fire or medical call. That is down from 18 and 1/2 minutes 10 years ago. That means that an engine company averaging 4.4 calls per shift spends less than 1 hour and 15 minutes, or about 4% of their on-duty time, responding to and completing those calls. In 1998, Emergency Consulting and Research Center, a private consulting firm, examined some of the data and stated in its report to the Glendale Fire Department, quote, "The great majority of fires are single-alarm incidents handled by the first-due engine company. These incidents are resolved quickly and do not impact the overall emergency response capability of the fire department," end quote. The report goes on to say, quote, "Using the average on-time, the average time-on-task interval for medical responses, the Glendale Fire Department spends 2.8% of the available on-duty engine-company time per shift and 0.7% on fire calls. This is a total of 3.6 of a shift. In addition, firefighters average less than 1 hour per shift training and about 1 hour doing maintenance around the station. The productive time on an average 24-shift, 24-hour shift, including training, maintenance, and responding on emergency calls, is about 3 hours. A truck company averages less than 2 calls per 24-hour shift. Some fire stations are busier than others, but it is not uncommon for a truck company and some engine companies to have no calls at all during a 24-hour shift. Other times, although rare, engine companies can log up to 10 or more calls per shift. But even with that volume at 15 minutes per run, they are handling calls for no more than 3 hours, or about 12% of their shift. Most calls occur during normal waking hours with increased demand reflecting the burgeoning daytime population. We don't pay firefighters to be productive during their entire 24-hour shift. We pay them to, we pay them well to respond to emergency calls as fast as is humanly possible and to handle the incidents professionally, following established training and protocol. They are the highest-paid workforce in all of government, and we should expect that they adopt the best practices to deliver the services they provide to the public." No informed citizen or fire official will disagree with the following premise: that the best practice for emergency response occurs when the engine and truck companies and firefighters and rescue ambulances and paramedics are in their neighborhood fire stations, ready to respond to emergency calls. Fire stations are generally located near the geographic center of their district, so that they have the ability to respond in any direction with similar response times. Anything less than that has the potential of impacting performance by adding seconds or minutes on emergency calls. Engine and truck companies know this as, quote, "Geographic integrity," quote. This means that firefighters are committed to being in their fire districts, allowing the best possible response times to the neighborhoods they serve. They are dedicated to doing everything reasonably possible to remain at maximum readiness, all personnel and apparatus in district and preferably in station. All fire personnel consider rapid response to be first and foremost in their mission of providing the finest emergency services to the public. We will return next week and address the first of several subjects that pertain to policies that affect response times, efficiencies, best practices, and cost savings. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dr. Richard Espiritu, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. I am Dr. Richard Espiritu. I'm going to ask my three questions that I asked last week. Regarding the vehicle inspection reports, why is MV Transportation and the city still in violation of its own contract? Route 13, why did the city allow the bus to go into service before it was inspected? And last question, Zone 9, who did the curb cuts and who checked the work after it was done? This is the sidewalk monitor report. This is at the Glen Oaks in Grandview at the Carl's Jr. This is broken sidewalk, lousy curb cut. This is right in front of Carl's Jr. again. This is at Pellicone Park. This is interesting. There's no sidewalk right there, and there is only one parking, handicap parking spot, and there are 78 parking spaces there. This is on the Grandview side of Pellicone Park. If you need to get out of those cars, you must use the sidewalk to get into the park. I don't believe that's accessibility. This is looking north from the same location. This is the Bank of America on the corner of Cerritos and San Fernando Road. This is an elevated sidewalk. This is the lousy tree well. This is also right in front of the Bank of America. And this is at the Cancer Center on San Fernando Road, right around the corner from the Bank of America. Tree wells. This is on the corner of San Fernando Road again, and at the Cancer Center. This is a raised sidewalk, also at the Cancer Center. This is at the Central and San Fernando Road. There's a crossing there. Do you notice there is a raised sidewalk? A lot of people use that. This is from the street side, looking toward the sidewalk. This is the medical building, right next to the Glendale Memorial Hospital. This is right in front of the medical building, tree wells, cracked sidewalks. This is in front of the hospital. This is Route 1 and 2, the bus stop for V Line. This is tree wells. This is right at the curb. That's a 1 and 1 and 1/2 inch raised from the sidewalk. That's where the people get on the bus. This is looking north from that bus stop, and you can see all the tree wells that are also messed up. This is the MTA bus stop on San Fernando and Los Feliz, 40 feet south of Dynis Fried Chicken. Tree wells, raised sidewalks again. This is on Laurel Street. This is approximately 125 feet from the hospital main entrance. This is an interesting picture, because you can see a lady crossing right in front of Burger King over there. During a 20-minute period of time, I personally observed 15 people crossing, they were either visitors or hospital personnel, crossed at that place. We should have a crosswalk signal, or we should put the Glendale PD officers over there. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Followed by Barry Allen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilmen. I'd like to talk to you about the dirtiness of the city of Glendale. One of the reasons I moved to Glendale approximately 30 years ago...
Your name for the record, please.
Mike Mohill. One of the reasons I moved to Glendale 30 years ago was Glendale was a clean city. Today, it's a dirty city. It looks just like Los Angeles. I've complained several times about the sidewalks around City Hall. They're disgusting. We can't afford to use any type of thing called steam cleaning. The streets of Glendale look like the streets of LA. You wonder why people get more rent in the city of Pasadena? Because their streets and sidewalks are spick and span. No matter where you go, they're clean, no matter where I walk. Last week, I was in Melrose Avenue, West LA. It reminded me of Glendale, dirty. Do we want to have a big reputation having a dirty city? That's where we are today. Glendale is a dirty city, gets uglier every day. And I'm embarrassed to tell you this, that if I was to pick up and move to another city, it would not be Glendale. It would be Pasadena, because they got their act together. And that's why they get more money for their rent in the downtown area of Pasadena, and Glendale comes in third, next to Burbank. And Burbank is a cleaner city also. How can we keep bringing in more people to the city downtown area of Glendale when we can't even keep our streets clean? You want us to cut back on the water? We're going to have 10,000 more people in downtown Glendale. I, for one, will not reduce my water consumption or my electricity. Why do we need more people in the city of Glendale to make it as dirty as Los Angeles? Thank you for your time.
Well, I'd like to point out, though, that Glendale is a much safer city than Pasadena and Burbank, and although the streets might be cleaner, I don't know if I agree with that, certainly, we're safer in Glendale, so...
Per what thousand?
We are safer by any measure, Mr. Mohill.
But for how much longer?
Well, we can talk about that all night.
How long is long? But look at the reputation.
Barry Allen is the next speaker. Barry Allen is the next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. I think we should be very fortunate in Glendale that we have advocates, advocates like Richard Espiritu, being the sidewalk monitor, talking about all of the infrastructure issues that we have, and what was it, $12 million behind on sidewalk, or 12 years behind, I guess it is, according to the CIP issue. And of course, I think we really need to thank Bruce Philpott for spending 12 years on developing the program that he's going to be demonstrating to you that he did this evening and for the next five weeks. And of course, that information will be on the Vanguardian website and also on Hal Weber's open government website. And I don't know if you know this about Bruce, but his ancestors signed the Declaration of Independence, so that he has been an advocate, his family has been an advocate for several centuries, just in this country, or the beginnings of this country. And one of the things that also came out of the issue relative to the California Supreme Court, saying that the cities and other entities had to provide payroll information to those who have requested it. Today, or yesterday, I guess it was, we posted that information on several of our websites, and the response has been very enlightening, the one that I think several of the council members after this morning's CIP meeting would be interested in. There are a number of people that have been absolutely outraged and angered by the largesse that this community has given to the fire department. They were shocked to see over 173 people in the fire department receiving over $100,000, belonging to the $100,000 club. And one of them, fast approaching the salary and payroll of our own esteemed city manager, just a few thousand dollars off of what Mr. Starbird earns each year. And I think that was rather shocking. And I think that when you look at the outrage, when you're looking at the potential of $14.5 million for an upgraded fire station in Montrose, I think that Station 29, I think Mr. Quintero, when he indicated that maybe some paint, spit paint and polish would take care of the old fire station and library, I think he's certainly on target. And I think that $14.5 million that may or may not go for that could certainly be better spent on an aquatic center that would benefit the entire community instead of 30 firefighters. I think that we really have to take a look at our priorities. And I think that those numbers that came out today were rather shocking to the public in Glendale. And I understand rather shocking as well to the employees of the city of Glendale, who were very surprised. In fact, we don't have to write a Vanguard next week. The letters that came in were just, you know, we couldn't keep up with them and keep up with the phone calls. And I think that's something that we really need to look at. And I think that, by the way, the fire department and the firefighters should be giving Bruce Philpott an award on the 12th. I look forward to their doing that with the awards luncheon. I think he certainly deserves one for a stand-up and acknowledgement of what he is doing to benefit the fire department in the city of Glendale. And I think you'll see more and more of that. And I also want to mention that I will be on Larry Zarian's forum on Thursday evening, and that I think that Councilmember Draymond's room for rent could be, make an interesting miniature soccer field, you know, that I think with so much emphasis on that, that I think, you know, probably the dimensions are-- Are you writing that down? Good, thank you. I appreciate that. We will have more ideas in the future. But I certainly do appreciate the fact that the public is being more aware of what we're doing in Glendale and advocating for more things that are occurring. And one request that I had was 3612 Linda Vista. When will that be on the agenda? Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you. Mr., I'm sorry, is it Ms. Robin Hanson? Or is it Mr. Robin?
Hello.
Okay.
My name is Robin Lee Hanson. Good evening, Mayor, and council members and staff. I'm representing the doctor's house in Bran Park. We're going to be having a wonderful memory quilt exhibit in the month of October. And I would like you all to remember in the second and third weekend of December that we're going to be having our, I can't think of how many years it's been, but we're having our candlelight tour. So please come out, bring your families, bring people who've seen it. We work really, really hard putting these exhibits in. We clean this house by ourselves. You know, it's tremendous. I do much more housework there than I do in my own home. And I'm telling you, I have, it's really been an education to learn all the things that I have learned, what you can do, what you can't do. It's fabulous. And I don't think that people appreciate enough what Isabel Meyer has done, all the hours and hours, and all the other members of historical society who have given all their time. But please come out and support us, and support us financially, please. We only ask a dollar, you know, so come out and support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least is Mr. Albert Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor Nigerian, councilman, staff, public. Albert Hoffman, resident of Glendale. I think you got a miniature soccer ball for the--
Oh, that's right. We'll use this and you're--
Soccer.
Put in there.
Boy, get a foosball machine.
I attended this morning's planning session, I guess it was, the prioritization of projects in Glendale. And all day, I've been, it's been bugging me to hear that our power station or our power supply is going bad. And I had no idea that we were in dire straits. I kept thinking we were in good shape with power. We heard Magnolia Station in Glendale, and we're able to sell power and do all these things, and now we're in dire need of a lot of work on our power.
Mr. Hoffman, you better wait to hear from Dan Waters, the head of Water and Power.
Pardon?
You better wait to hear from Dan Waters, Department of Water and Power, before--
I'm just expressing what I heard this morning from the councilman.
You just heard here. Get it from the horse's mouth.
I'm expressing what I heard from the councilman this morning.
I know. And I didn't believe it.
Okay? And that's what I'm expressing, Mr. Weaver.
Okay.
And at least you didn't even have the courtesy to stay this morning when the public came up to speak. So don't tell me--
I already made arrangements to have to leave 11:15.
Let's not get into the back--
Well, I mean, I don't--
Please continue, Mr.--
Appreciate him telling me I didn't hear.
I don't think it was meant in a bad way. I think he said, we'll have--
That report comes out, I'd be interested to see it. But the bottom line is, we have power problems. We're going to be faced with water shortages, as we heard from Mr. Townsend. And this all leads me to the point that I think we really need to consider putting a moratorium on new residential units in this town. Now, in the downtown area, I was on the public committee on this specific plan. We all agreed that before we build anything downtown, we needed to solve the traffic problem. We just have to get transportation into that area before we start adding more residential units in this mixed-use scheme that we've come up with. And I believe the mixed-use is a good way to go. But right now, we need to deal with power, with water, and later on, there'll be a thing about our bulky or our disposable items that I'm interested in as well. These things are all part of our infrastructure that we have not paid attention to. I mentioned this morning, we need to be proactive in planning. We haven't done that. We have been overdeveloping for the last 25 to 30 years, and it's catching up with us. And our infrastructure is falling apart on us, and we need to deal with that. And I think each of you need to really consider that as a priority thing. Maybe it's a good time to slow down on a lot of these residential things. Gives a good chance to get all the ordinances done too, in that time. Might be a good deal for both ways. So, again, I really urge that you consider what we're doing to ourselves in the future by adding more and more and more units. We really need to get a handle on that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes oral communications. I don't have any further cards unless I've overlooked anyone. Mr. Yusefian.
On the issue of water that was brought up several times a while back, I had asked, and I think there was interest on behalf of at least you, to deal with a program that goes about replacing water closets at a time of sale. I had some opportunity to talk to the Board of Realtors and try to see if there's other ways of doing this. I'd like to agendize that item, and I think you were interested in doing that. The other thing that could be done is just like we do with our, what is it? No, the smoke detectors. Neighborhood Services goes through certain parts of the city to inspect all of those things during inspection. That may be a possible way of looking for also those items, and GWP has some projects, so that's something that we should take--
So I guess in a broader sense, the issue of retrofitting water fixtures within the homes--
At time of sale or--
At time of--
Similar criteria. There are other cities--
Mr. Mayor, we have that scheduled to come back to you, as was requested, yeah.
So long as it's not coming back next week.
I think it was next week. Just kidding.
Okay. Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, Mr. Starbird, I do agree with a lot of Mr. Hoffman's observations, but why don't you give us an idea whether you feel that there is a utility issue, that we have some sort of crisis specifically at that plant located at the Grayson Plant.
I was, as the comments were being made, both this morning and this afternoon, I was asking Dan Waters to prepare a report on the status of the Grayson Power Plant. I will tell you, at the end of the deregulation debacle, we did look at means of replacing Grayson, upgrading Grayson. And frankly, at that time, as you know, we entered into the consortium through the Southern California Power Authority to build Magnolia, that also has a direct link to Glendale. So that in case of an outage of the Western Grid, Glendale, along with Burbank, has direct access to what is now a state-of-the-art, almost 300-megawatt power system that is owned by a multiple of cities, but which physically might only be able to provide power to two, that would be us and Burbank. Frankly, it was a smart decision to, at least as I heard from Mr. Troncoso, a smart decision to not jump quickly into building our own power plant here locally. The city attorney is giving me the signals that I'm getting too far into this matter. Let me suggest, again, I've asked Dan Waters to do a report on the status of Grayson. They would like to come and give you a complete report on the status of our infrastructure in electric and water in total. I think there are a number of challenges there. You've heard many of them during the budget review process. But as I noted to the Glendale homeowners' court and council recently, I think that is some of our largest challenges on the horizon. Not to say, though, that we are at a dire condition as has been depicted here, to the point that we have to stop all development. But in the long term, as we look out on the horizon, we do need to make sure we take steps to maintain the quality of our infrastructure and the reliability that we become depend on in both electrical and water here in Glendale. But no, I'd say the answer is no, we're not facing a dire emergency. But they are both systems that we need to give attention to.
And could we also have Larry Morehouse here also, who's running the power plant on that day?
Wait, is this something agendized?
Yeah. I'd like to agendize that, because I do watch Glendale Water and Power Commission, and I do hear what the staff give, staff report to the commissioners.
I thought, I just heard that Dan Waters was putting a report together.
Right.
We will put a report together for you. As I noted--
And agendize that, so this could be discussed in public.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next item, please.
At 8A is Action Items. At 8A is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services regarding proposed grant application to the California Habitat Conservation Fund HCF program. And at 8A1 is Resolution Supporting the Submittal of a Grant Application to the California Habitat Conservation Fund Program.
Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to move 8A1.
Second. Any discussion? Sounds like a good program. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Aaron Nigerian?
Yes.
The next item.
8B is Director of Public Works regarding presentation of conservation technologies for solid waste management. At B1 is Motion to Note and File Report.
Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to move 8B1.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have a little staff report. Certainly permitted to move it. I just-- Zern has been waiting to give this.
Certainly permitted to move it in second before the report is-- So we have a motion and a second, and I do have a speaker. At some point, we will, at some point, we'll ask Mr. Hoffman to come up. Why don't we have, go to Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is one where we'd like to take a few minutes and actually have representatives here from Los Angeles County give you an overview. You had a discussion, a couple of studies--
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot.
You had a discussion, a couple of study sessions ago about emerging technologies in the area of integrated waste and waste disposal. So we thought this would be a good time to have the county give a presentation on the work that they've done in evaluating emerging technologies in the field of waste disposal. Steve, have I capsulated okay?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, we're forging ahead based on your approval with the various processes for the expansion of Shoal Canyon Landfill, which gets us what seems like maybe a long time, 12 to 15 years, but in the overall scope of things, it's a very short time. So we're looking at now, what my objective is to try to bring to you and start floating the idea and talking about what we're going to do 30 years from now, when we run out of disposal space. And as Mr. Starbird said, these emerging technologies, collectively, we refer to them as conversion technologies, have been coming up, not only from the landfilling perspective, but also many of these generate electricity and across the country are becoming more viable as a result of their ability to produce renewable-type, cleaner-type energy production. With that, and I'm glad Mr. Weaver didn't move into that, because it took me-- I have Mr. Kobe Sky here from Los Angeles County Department of Public Works. I came across Mr. Sky at a landfill conference that I attended, and he touched on these subjects, talked about what the county's doing. He's very well-informed and well-educated in his subject. I thought, instead of me coming up here and babbling about it, I would bring him. Mr. Sky is an associate civil engineer with the County of Los Angeles. He's a registered civil engineer, Mr. Weaver, and he's in the environmental program. So with that, and let me just make a distinction, because this did come up. Mr. Sky represents the Los Angeles County Department of Public Works, which is a different agency from the sanitation districts of Los Angeles County, which is our partner in running Shoal Canyon Landfill. So there's two different agencies with possibly different philosophies on where we should go in the future of disposal.
I want to add, Mr. Sky, I dealt with Public Works when I was for the Corps of Engineers. So under, then we're coming from, I apologize for getting you brought this nice presentation.
Not at all.
And, Mr. Mayor, I might add, Mr. Zern and I, just coincidentally, Mr. Zern and I were part of a meeting about two weeks ago. The city of Los Angeles is very interested in these same technologies that Mr. Sky will be discussing this evening, and approached us about our interest in pursuing them further with the city of Los Angeles as well. So between LA County and the city of Los Angeles and the city of Glendale and the resources here, I think there's some tremendous opportunities on the horizon.
I'd just have one other thing. I chaired the Integrated Waste Committee for the city of Glendale about 15 years ago. And we talked about creating an environmental campus up there to look for evolving technologies and stuff. That's over 10 years ago, 10, 15 years ago, and we still haven't moved off the dime. So I hope maybe your presentation will get us moving.
Well, a need is certainly just as pressing. And will this go through the slides? Well, first of all, I just wanted to thank Mr. Zern for inviting me to speak to you, esteemed members of the city council and mayor, regarding this issue. This is something that the county's been working on for a number of years. It's an issue that really touches on a number of environmental initiatives and-- It's an issue that really touches on a number of environmental initiatives, and briefly, the presentation I'll be giving tonight will discuss these new technologies in terms of what they are, what the benefits are, and the demonstration project that the County of Los Angeles has been working with and with other partners, and what we've learned from our review of these technologies, our tours of reference facilities, and what we've been able to conclude from our evaluations. Just to put things in perspective, every year in California, over 42 million tons of trash goes into landfills. We also know that nearly half of the counties in California are expected to exhaust their disposal capacity within the next 15 years, and new landfills take 10 to 15 years to design and permit. That's if you're able to design and permit them at all. And the paradigm in California is that we don't, we will not likely see any new landfills developed. Certainly, we will not see any new landfills develop in Los Angeles County. That's been the commitment from the Board of Supervisors, and we've certainly had support from the cities for that direction. But at the same time, we're seeing more and more urban centers especially needing to export their waste. LA County is looking at a long-term exportation of waste to remote disposal locations, and we're seeing this condition throughout the country. So it's certainly not a Southern California phenomenon, although we're addressing it more proactively than some other locations. We've also seen a lot of increases in solid waste regulations for solid waste facilities, more stringent regulations on liner systems, post-closure maintenance. We've seen a lot of interest from the state to assure long-term post-closure of solid waste facilities, mitigation for traffic, odor, operating restrictions, and the public has certainly become much more aware and involved in the development and even re-permitting of solid waste facilities. So even when we have what may be routine re-permitting of facilities, we see a lot of interest and activity from the public. And of course, we've had a lot of interest and attention on climate change. This is an issue that is driving a lot of the legislation in Sacramento, and I think we're going to see a lot more on this issue. And this table is from the most recent evaluation by the USCPA on sources of greenhouse gas emissions in the category of methane, which is 21 times more potent than CO2 as a greenhouse gas. Landfills nationwide remain the number-one source of greenhouse gas emissions. We're very lucky in California to have much more stringent emissions requirements. We have requirements for the collection and destruction of methane either through a flaring system or energy recovery, and we're seeing that in many landfills throughout California. So the picture is a little bit better in California than it is nationwide, but we still do have this issue of methane production and greenhouse gas emissions from landfills.
And enteric fermentation of the cows?
Yes.
Okay.
Ooh.
So, it's very interesting, once you start looking at the large sources-
That's a nice way of-
-and how to tackle those issues.
Enteric fermentation.
So, if we were to become more vegetarians, we'd be able to tackle that issue a little better. What we're also seeing is that there are a lot of other drivers for change. We've heard a lot of discussion at the council meeting tonight about energy, the energy crisis from a few years back, the Northeast blackout of 2003 that affected literally millions of people. What we're learning from that is we need a diversification of our energy sources and more localized sources of energy so that we're not reliant on one central grid. Transportation fuels is another major driver for changes on the horizon. We're seeing continual increases in the cost for transportation fuels, air emissions issues that are driving the need to reduce our importation and use of imported oil, and all of these are driving the renewable fuel market. Waste management continues to be an issue. Glendale is in a better position than many other cities because you have your own local landfill, but your Director of Public Works is very proactive in looking at that issue because all landfills do have a limited lifespan, and at some point, they'll need to close and you'll need to look at other options. And as I mentioned, climate change is going to continue to be a major driver for changes on environmental issues, and it's really going to overshadow some of the other issues that we're looking at. So we see, obviously, these are very big issues and will need a lot of solutions, and we see conversion technologies as one solution for a number of these issues. When we talk about conversion technologies, we refer to emerging technologies that are able to convert post-recycling residual solid waste into products, chemicals, fuels, and renewable energy. And we focus specifically on the material that is remaining after all the recycling has been done to the greatest extent feasible. There are a number of different categories for these technologies, thermal, chemical, or biological, but they do not include the traditional waste-energy facilities which combust the waste. And in our evaluations of these technologies, we've found literally hundreds of facilities operating in Europe and Japan and other countries, but to date, we don't have any commercial-scale facilities anywhere in the U.S. We're hoping, obviously, to change that with our demonstration project, which I'll talk a little bit more about later in the presentation. So to give you an idea of what we're talking about with some of these different technologies, under the thermal category, we have a pyrolysis technology which heats the waste in the complete absence of oxygen, thereby disassociating some of the chemical bonds, breaking down the materials. With gasification, you have a slightly higher operating temperature. You also use pressure and steam to break down the materials into constituent products. Under chemical, an example is acid hydrolysis. This is the use of either a weak or a strong acid to break down those same chemical bonds and the organic fraction of the waste. And using that process, you can, for example, use a cellulose-ethanol process to produce fuels. You can make other products from it. And biological, there are a variety of different biological processes. The most common anaerobic digestion uses bacteria to break down the organic fraction of the waste, and aerobic digestion, most people are familiar with as composting, which is allowing the waste to break down naturally in the presence of oxygen. This is a sampling of some of the different facilities. We visited some of these facilities around the world, and they really vary not only between different categories of technologies, but also from vendor to vendor. Each vendor may operate the facility under different conditions, using different feedstocks, have different products, and so there's really, literally hundreds of different options out there for municipalities to consider. I also wanted to draw your attention to the image on the bottom right of the screen. This is a facility in Europe. It's an anaerobic digestion technology, and it's right next to a Burger King. And it's not located there because it's taking the feedstock from the Burger King. It just happens to be located in an area, and I think this showcases the fact that Europe has accepted these new technologies much more than the U.S. has. In the U.S., people are still very skeptical about these new technologies because they haven't seen them in operation. I think the other big difference between Europe and Japan, where we see a lot of these technologies in residential areas and operating successfully, they've really been ahead of the curve on climate change and the need to take proactive action in reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and they see these technologies as a significant way of doing that.
What does feedstock mean?
When we refer to feedstock for these particular technologies, we're looking at the residual waste stream that'll be used to really power these new technologies. When we're looking, basically, the summary of it, in our evaluations, what we found is that using conversion technologies to manage that trash rather than sending it directly to a landfill has a number of benefits. First and foremost, the ability to manage all of these excess biomass and organic waste streams. Up to 80% of the materials we send to landfills in California is organic in nature, and that material has a lot of energy trapped inside of it and other resources that we could be using to more productive use. We can also reduce our dependence on landfills and waste exporting, which maintains local control. This is a major issue. Los Angeles County as a region exports 20% of our waste currently, with the closure of the Pointe Hills landfill, which is currently the largest operating landfill in the country in 2013. That facility, by the way, takes 13,000 tons every single day. It's about a third of the trash generated in Los Angeles County, and its closure date of 2013 is set in stone. So that means, within a very few short years, we'll have to find new locations for all of that waste. Shoal Canyon has a waste shed, so there's very strict restrictions on where the waste that is deposited there can come from. So that means we're going to be exporting waste primarily outside of Los Angeles County, and we're estimating anywhere between 40 and up to 70% of the waste from LA County will need to be exported unless we develop these new technologies. And that means higher costs, more pollution, more congestion. We want to try and mitigate all of those to the extent we can with local solutions. And on the issue of local solutions, we're also producing renewable energy and fuels. Right now, for the ethanol market, 99% of the ethanol used in California is imported from the Midwest, and that's only to meet the 5.6% blending that happens in California. We're talking about trying to maximize our use of E85 fuels and other alternative fuels. To meet that tremendous demand, we're going to need to fund local biomass resources, and the waste materials that would otherwise go to landfills are a perfect resource for that. Now, by producing this local energy and green fuels, we're also reducing our dependence on foreign oil as well, and so we're displacing fossil fuels and foreign oil that would be imported from the Middle East as well. And one of the primary benefits, creating green collar jobs, it's a term that the City of L.A. uses in their Renewal A Plan, and what we mean by green collar jobs, these are environmental sector jobs that are high wages, good benefits, and that are immune from globalization. We can't export these jobs because the facilities are here, and we need a high level of technical expertise to keep these facilities running. And so there's a real investment in this from the private sector as well. And one of the fundamental benefits is reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. And we find that not only from taking away materials that would otherwise be sent to landfills, but you're also reducing greenhouse gas emissions from transportation of waste and from producing fuel and electricity, which offsets fossil fuel use. So in essence, we're turning a liability, solid waste, into a valuable resource. The County of Los Angeles's project specifically focuses on co-location of conversion technology facilities with material recovery facilities. There are a number of specific benefits that come together when you co-locate solid waste facility and conversion technology facility. One of the things is, if you're co-locating with a landfill, you can extend the life of that existing landfill. Conversion technologies are able to reduce the amount of material remaining for disposal by 90% or more. Some of these technologies can actually eliminate the need to dispose any residual amount, and what that does is reserve the landfill capacity for further use in the future. It also ensures that the remaining residual material is typically inert in nature when you're disposing of it. And what that means is you're reducing the emissions of greenhouse gases, the potential for leaching of materials into the water table, and other environmental impacts that may come from that organic waste stream. That's why, for example, the European Union has actually banned the disposal of organic materials prior to processing, either through conversion or composting or some other method. Another benefit is producing energy and fuel. We certainly talked about the need to produce energy locally for local use by residents, and conversion technologies are able to produce renewable energy and fuels. Some technologies even have the flexibility to produce more fuels at times when you need them, and then, for example, for peak demand uses, increase the production of electricity during certain times of the day. This provides a lot of flexibility to the solid waste facility and a source for additional Conversion technologies are also able to recover additional marketable products. These can include carbon char, inert aggregate materials, soil amendments, and additional recovered recyclables that would otherwise not have been recyclable were they processed in a typical recycling facility. This generates additional revenue and is obviously an economic benefit to the community. In terms of co-location with a landfill, all landfills have a number of requirements for post-closure maintenance, and the development of a conversion technology facility on-site can ensure that there is continuing revenue for the facility to manage those post-closure costs. So that's another stabilizing effect of developing a conversion technology facility. And limiting liability for AB32 implementation, now that the framework for AB32 is being developed, all of the major sources for greenhouse gas emissions will need to reduce their emissions profile. Using conversion technologies can help meet those AB32 goals. And finally, I think that the development of renewable energy and advanced technology facilities can help build some community support for existing solid waste facilities. This can show that there is a commitment by the solid waste facility operator to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, produce energy and fuels locally, and reduce emissions from refuse trucks. This is one of the most significant issues we see with all solid waste facilities is that those trucks are particularly an impact on the community in terms of congestion and air emissions. Developing a conversion facility on-site can actually eliminate the need for transfer trucks by managing that waste on-site. And so that's another benefit of co-location specifically with conversion technologies. One potential way that the development of a conversion facility can benefit a solid waste facility is also increasing the facility throughput. This is something that the community would need to consider. You can either extend the life of the facility or make the facility a resource for the region by expanding the facility throughput. And last but certainly not least, a number of conversion technologies are being considered that would actually mine old landfills. Especially back in the 1950s and 60s when recycling programs weren't really being developed by cities, there were a lot of recyclable materials in the waste stream that was going to landfills. When you start mining that material, you can really recover a tremendous amount of energy and products and materials. And in St. Lucie County, Florida, for example, they're considering the development of a gasification facility that would literally eat the entire landfill, recover that site for other purposes. So it's amazing the opportunities that we see with these new technologies. Some of the latest developments on conversion technologies, we're seeing, first of all, a number of cities across the nation considering proposals and studies for conversion technologies from New York to Santa Barbara. The City of Los Angeles and the County of Los Angeles are really the leaders in evaluating these technologies and promoting development locally of these new technologies to manage solid waste. I mentioned the St. Lucie County proposal. This is a 100,000-square-foot facility, and they're expecting to process 3,000 tons per day. Something I'm sure you'll notice is a generation of 120 megawatts of energy, net is 80 megawatts, and that is a significant amount. It's really going to help the local community to meet a significant portion of their needs. Also of note, the Blue Fire Ethanol Project, which recently received $40 million in grants from the Federal Department of Energy, and they will be developing an acid hydrolysis-to-ethanol facility converting green waste up in the northern area of Los Angeles County. More specifically, the county's efforts to develop a demonstration project to have a long lifespan. About two years ago, we completed our Phase 1 evaluation effort, and this was looking at literally hundreds of different technology suppliers from around the world to evaluate the technologies that seem to be most promising and promote their development here in Southern California. This report also detailed a step-by-step plan to develop a demonstration facility within Southern California. And in Phase 2, we've been looking at the shortlisted conversion technology vendors, using a team of experts and our technical consultant to scrutinize those technologies and come up with the most viable- and come up with the most viable technologies before we move forward in this demonstration project. Now, the reason that we focused on a demonstration project, we believe that there would be a ripple of regional benefits for moving forward with a demonstration project first. One of the things we are constantly confronting is the need for concrete performance data for these technologies, especially with respect to emissions, but also with respect to their byproducts and their performance. Developing these demonstration projects would give us a much better idea of the performance of the technologies before we go to commercial scale. It'd also give us an analysis of the feasibility of these technologies to develop on a larger scale, not just from a technical standpoint, but also from an economic and environmental perspective. We want to make sure that these technologies can flourish in Southern California within our regulatory framework. And we want to forge the permitting and legislative pathways for future projects. In 1989, when AB 939 was written into law, they didn't really imagine that there would be these new technologies being used to manage solid waste. And so they didn't create a category for them. And we're having to develop these new permitting pathways, really rewriting the books on legislation and regulations to allow for these projects to be developed. And we're hoping by providing a validation of these technologies from a third-party perspective, to provide a catalyst and send a clear signal to the marketplace for them to come in and develop future projects, bridging the valley of death that comes from technologies that have the research and development but don't have the bridge funding to develop on a commercial scale. And with this successful demonstration project, it'll really provide an impetus for development of additional technologies and facilities throughout the region to better manage our waste on a local basis. We've developed the model for the demonstration project as a true public-private partnership. And there are three components to it. The MRF operator, this is a recycling facility that is partnering with the county's project, would provide the feedstock. This is the trash, that's the residual waste that would otherwise be put in a transfer truck and sent to a landfill. That material would be used on site, and the recycling facility would also be providing the land. And obviously, in Southern California, land is a very valuable commodity, so it adds a lot to the project. The technology supplier would be bringing, of course, their proprietary technology, but they're also required to bring the financing for the project. And what we found in meeting with major banks and venture capitalist firms, Morgan Stanley, Goldman Sachs, the largest firms are very interested in investing in these new technologies. There's a lot of interest from the public sector in increasing our development of environmental technologies to manage some of these large-scale issues. And that investment capital has really risen to the challenge. And so we're finding that a lot of these projects can very easily be financed. It's a matter of making sure the rest of the pieces are lined up. And that's really where the county's role is in developing this project. We're there to facilitate the project, make sure that it's successful, assist in the permitting. This is especially important for companies that are based outside of California that aren't familiar with our regulations and our particular environmental framework. Also, obtaining additional data and helping to procure grants that will really make the project a success. When you're looking at smaller-scale projects, it's a little bit more difficult for the economies of scale to work, and we want to make sure that the project is economically Our Phase 2 process, as I mentioned earlier, to closely scrutinize these new technologies, we found a number of technologies that we see as really viable. And we're on track to begin negotiations this fall with the shortlist of technologies and recycling facilities that would provide the site, develop a specific proposal, and then going to design and permitting next year. Phase 3, which we are just beginning to develop, will focus on developing commercial-scale facilities based on the experiences that we've seen from the demonstration project, with really an eye for managing LA County's waste on a commercial scale. And I put up the website. I could talk a lot about the county's efforts, but there's really a lot of information on socalc conversion.org. That's our regional resource for conversion technologies. So this is a point that I think a lot of people are interested. What technologies have we found, and which ones are viable? In the county's particular process, we've been focusing not only on the most viable technologies, but technology companies that have a record of operation, that have operating reference facilities, and that are interested and capable of developing a facility successfully in Southern California. And we've come up with four technologies that have made it through our process and were willing to partner with us. Aeroecology is an anaerobic digestion process. It's a biological process. And we have three different thermal technologies that really showcase the variety from vendor to vendor in these different thermal processes. A pyrolysis process, a hybrid pyrolysis gasification, and a pure gasification technology have all made it through our process. Yes?
I know what problem. What is the problem?
That's a good question. And when you look at pyrolysis, your pyrolysis involves a complete absence of oxygen, and it also is a relatively lower temperature than gasification. The Interstate Waste Technologies process is a hybrid approach, where in the first stage, they have a lower-temperature pyrolysis. And then later on, they turn up the temperature a little bit more, add a little bit oxygen to help dissociate the chemical bonds. And with that process, they can convert 100 percent of the organic materials in the waste stream into what's called a synthesis gas. This is a gas from the organic products. Okay. So that's the hybrid approach. And then the NTEC Environmental Company is a purely gasification technology.
Yeah. I have a question. I assume these vendors, an assumption, they are buying this technology from other companies?
No. Actually, the case for all of these technologies are they are the proprietor, i.e. the developer of the technology, or are the exclusive developer in the U.S. for the technology?
Right. That's what I'm asking. The exclusive developer in the U.S. for the technology. So I'm just curious. Maybe you don't know, but are some of these technologies from Europe, another one from Japan, or where do they come from?
That's a great question. Aeroecology, they're based in Israel. We visited their reference facility in Tel Aviv. IES is actually a local company. They have a pilot plant in Riverside County. They're one of the exceptions. Most of the technologies we evaluated were, in fact, outside of the U.S. Interstate Waste Technologies, they are based in Europe but have operating facilities primarily in Japan. And we visited the reference facility there. ThermoSelect is actually the developer of the technology, and IWT is the exclusive developer in the U.S. And NTEC Environmental is also based in Europe. They have facilities throughout Europe, in Poland, England, Italy, and other locations.
Did you ever look at the plasma technology?
Yes, we did. And in fact, if you look at our--
Because I don't see that in your list.
And I think it's a good point to highlight. The technologies that have made it through our process are, in some ways, a self-selecting list. These are companies that not only have made it through our very rigorous screening process, but also are the ones that were capable of and interested in developing in Southern California. We did, in fact, look at a number of PlasmaArc technology companies. Some of them had decided that they wanted to develop their technology more in other areas and have not made it through our process. But we do know of several companies. For example, there's a company that is working with the city of Los Angeles that's a PlasmaArc gasification. And the difference with PlasmaArc, for those that are interested, this is the use of a, literally, an electricity bolt that creates a very high-temperature plasma. It completely disassociates all of the chemical bonds in the waste stream, creates a syn gas at a very rapid rate. With all of these technologies, what we find is that there are different strengths and weaknesses. Some technologies are able to manage waste more effectively, depending on the feedstock, the characteristics of the waste. With the PlasmaArc technology, I think that it's certainly a viable technology. The St. Lucie County, Florida, project is actually a PlasmaArc technology as well.
Do you know when that will be operational?
They are estimating an operational date sometime around the end of the decade, so 2009, 2010 timeframe.
Thank you.
So the other important aspect is our partners in the site area. These are four locations that have worked with us, that are interested in developing a conversion technology demonstration project. And they would be specifically managing the residual waste that they'd otherwise be shipping to remote disposal. So there's certainly an economic interest for these recycling facilities to reduce their costs and also produce energy and fuels that they can use on site. And you notice we have locations literally throughout Southern California. One of the benefits of the project that we did was, we required any technology vendor that was participating in our process to have an operating reference facility. This was specifically pilot-scale or larger. It couldn't be like something that you had in your garage. Had to use solid waste or closely-related feedstocks, something that was very diverse. When you manage just tires or just carpet, you'll find that there's considerable new requirements that have to be implemented when you start managing solid waste, because it's very different. It changes on a daily basis, even an hourly basis, and you constantly have to make those adjustments. And we wanted to make sure they had a proven track record that we can view for their operational history. And visiting these reference facilities was an important due diligence step for all of the partners involved, the recycling facilities as well as the county, to make sure that we had a level of confidence in the technologies that we were ultimately going to recommend. And we learned a tremendous amount from these reference facility tours. For example, this is just a snapshot of the different waste streams that were being processed at these different technology locations. The differences between the waste streams in Japan versus the waste stream in Southern California can be significant, based on the recycling programs that are implemented in that community, the type of waste that ends up being disposed, whether composting is viable. And all of those differences have to be factored in when we transplant a technology from a different country and try to develop it here. So we were taking close notes on those characteristics and what those differences are before we developed the demonstration project. We also got a sense of the type of products and byproducts that are developed by these different facilities. On the left-hand side, this is the aerobiofacility end product. It's essentially a compost-type material that is marketed in Israel as a soil amendment. And we've done some initial studies to see whether this would be a viable product here in the U.S. There are obviously different requirements for this type of material. In the middle, you see a pelletized form of the residual waste stream. This is essentially a pre-processing step for the gasification process for the NTEC facility. And by pelletizing the residual waste, they can more effectively gasify it, make sure that all of the organic feedstock is broken down. And the right-hand side, I think, is a very interesting model. These are the steps for a recycling facility that's co-located with a conversion technology facility in Japan. And it follows the same model that we're hoping to replicate here in the U.S. And essentially, there's an aggregate-type material. With high-temperature gasification, you're able to essentially liquefy the inert materials, the metals, and the glass, and rocks that are left in the waste stream. And that material, when it's cooled quickly, becomes a very hard inert-type, essentially it's just like a sand or aggregate material. And you can use it to make a number of different materials. You can use it for road base, for concrete. And in this particular application, they use it to make paving and bricks. And the bricks were actually then used on-site at this facility. So it's a perfect closed loop. The aggregate converted from the waste process of the material was then used on-site as a product.
And what is the temperature of that thing? 2,200 degrees?
We're looking at approximately 2,200 degrees Celsius for the gasification. Another important component, we're looking at some of these technologies that are standalone facilities, they bring in solid waste as a raw product. With our particular project, we want to co-locate these conversion facilities with a material recovery facility. And so the critical interface is, when the residual waste comes off the line and is brought over to the conversion plant, we want to make sure that there isn't a breakdown in that particular point. And so we were evaluating the way that the materials were managed, what kind of pre-processing they needed. Did they need to be dried? Did they need to be shredded? And we want to make sure that all of those aspects are taken into consideration in the design of our demonstration project, to make sure that it's successful. And I think one of the highlights of our tours was the ability to meet and talk directly with the local regulators for these particular facilities, and to meet with communities and other stakeholders, talk to them about their experience with the technologies. What kind of hiccups did they have? How did they manage to develop the facilities? What kind of policies did they put in place to regulate the technologies and make sure that they operated safely and cleanly? And having that experience, since we don't have any other demonstration, well, I should say, commercial-scale facilities anywhere in the U.S., to learn from that experience is going to be tremendously beneficial to us when we develop our project. Some of the things that I think are very interesting, we learned from our direct visits. First of all, examining Japanese culture. They have a very high level of cultural discipline, and they also have recycling police. And what that leads to is incredibly high participation rates in their recycling programs. They also have very diversified programs. So we're talking about 15, 20 different bins for each of the different categories of recyclables. You separate newspaper from white paper from other types of paper. You separate the different types of glass. Green is not going to get mixed in with amber glass. All the different metals have different bins, and they're all set out on different days. So they're able to really separate those materials. And if you don't do it correctly, you get a little note from the recycling police. We also noticed that your neighbors are going to shun you, literally, if you're not recycling, because they take that very seriously in Japan. I don't think we would want to try and emulate that kind of a program in Southern California. People have become accustomed to a single blue bin. You throw all your recyclables in there, and even then, we have very high levels of contamination. It really makes it a struggle for us to recycle. But I think what was a learning experience for us is that despite these amazingly successful recycling programs, Japan still has a lot of residual waste. What we see in that is, we can't recycle everything. We're going to have some residual materials, and those materials need to be managed somehow. And what we can learn from Japan is, they've seen, right now, for the last 50 years, they've been dependent on the combustion technologies, waste energy facilities, to manage that residual waste. And they're moving to conversion technologies. They see a number of benefits to managing the waste through conversion rather than the old-style incineration. And if you look at the head-to-head comparison, now that they have these operating facilities next to each other, you can see that these new technologies, even the thermal technologies, have much lower emissions, on the order of magnitude lower than traditional waste energy. We also see that the ash that's produced by a traditional waste-to-energy facility is hazardous waste. And in Japan, it has to be taken to a special facility. Some of that ash is actually taken to conversion technology facilities. They're able to recover more energy and usable products from what would otherwise be a hazardous material. And so that was an amazing thing, to see the real performance of these technologies. And the other primary benefit with conversion is that there's a flexibility. You don't have to just produce electricity. You can produce products, you can produce fuels, and you can really tune in to the needs that you have. Did you have a question?
Well, you mentioned the, your chart mentions a high disposal cost and landfill taxes. So they're currently accustomed to over $50 a ton per disposal?
Well, what I would say is, the disposal costs, and this was universal throughout, even in Israel, but especially in Europe, in England, in Japan, they have not only incredibly high disposal costs, in fact, their disposal costs would translate in Japan to about $300 per ton. That's before the landfill taxes. The landfill taxes are on top of that. In England, they had approximately $50 per ton landfill tax on top of $50 per ton disposal cost.
So on a factor of the average cost to a resident in Los Angeles County, what are they accustomed to? what are they accustomed to in these other countries you visited?
Well, if we're talking about a $50 per ton, each household generates approximately one ton of waste per year. It would be $50 in taxes just for the disposal, per year, per resident. And what we saw was that, obviously, that's going to drive innovation and the development of these alternatives because the cost for disposal is just so high. And especially, the business sector was really pushing to develop these new technologies because they didn't want to be held hostage to being required to pay this landfill tax. I think that's especially why we see hundreds of these technologies operating successfully for years in Europe and Asia because they've had this, you know, it's a completely different mindset than we have here. Just for comparison purposes, Los Angeles County charges a solid waste management fee. It's roughly equivalent to this landfill tax because it's on each ton of waste disposed by residents in LA County, 86 cents per ton. And we're currently considering a proposal to increase that funding because that 86 cents per ton provides all of the funding for our county-wide programs, our recycling programs for household hazardous waste management, electronic waste management, our smart gardening program, tire recycling. There's just dozens of different programs that we run from that. And we've, for a long time, needed to increase that fee. And we're getting a lot of resistance wanting to increase the fee to $1.50 per ton. And just to consider the scale of $50 to $75 per ton, that's really completely changing the landscape in Europe and Asia and shifting them away from the old landfill disposal to these new technologies. So we certainly learned a lot from these trips, and I think it gives us a different perspective. I don't know if we'll be promoting a $50 a ton landfill tax anytime soon, but hopefully we'll get some more support for the $1.50 so we can continue to increase our recycling So the value of these reference facility tours, first of all, having that independent verification. So we're not just taking the word of the technology suppliers that, yes, my technology does this and here's how it performs. Seeing it firsthand, we had a team of experts. I'm a civil engineer, but we also had chemical engineers, other professionals that worked in the solid waste industry to evaluate these technologies and how they really operate it. We're also able to assess the regulatory framework that they operated in, look at their feedstock composition, and evaluate how that might impact our technology. And then those direct meetings with the regulators and the community to get their feedback on these technologies, get a sense of which companies were really making sure that they met the needs of the community and going above and beyond. And that all related to the shortlist that we developed. So in conclusion, we see these technologies as having a number of benefits, especially when co-located with a solid waste facility, reducing our greenhouse gas impact, generating fuels and energy, creating a more sustainable model for solid waste management, and really revolutionizing the way that we look at waste as a resource rather than a liability. But I definitely appreciate your time. We have my contact info there, and I would love to get any comments or feedback from you or your staff.
Well, this is a very impressive presentation. What can we do to try to get some of these technologies or a demonstration project going in Shoal Canyon? I noticed Ventura, Riverside, Orange County, Riverside again. Any potential for us?
Absolutely. And in the Phase 3 process that we, that I mentioned, first of all, the intention of our demonstration project is to learn as much as possible and to validate the technologies that we've shortlisted. We want to learn from that and then move towards a commercial-scale development in Los Angeles County managing LA County waste. And so we've really had interest from a lot of cities. Obviously, the city of LA is moving with their own project, the city of Santa Clarita, city of Calabasas, a number of other cities in Los Angeles County really want to partner with us and have adopted resolutions that say we want to partner with the county in the Phase 3 process when we learn from these demonstration projects. And certainly, I think there's the timeframe for developing the most viable technologies, learning from this and seeing what makes the most sense for the city of Glendale and how do we extend Shoal Canyon's lifespan and manage those materials for the benefit of the community.
I'd like to see us do just that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I followed one of the conversations I had with Mr. Wolf, who is the director of Public Works for the county, and was segwayed into us talking about Kobe and his presentation and bringing him here was, he asked, would we be interested in partnering with them or discussing further the potential for Shoal Canyon? As Mr. Sky indicated and Mr. Wolf reiterated, is that, you know, the feedstock, the fuel that you need for these facilities is vital. And we obviously have the fuel, and we have a regular source of that fuel. So we will continue to engage in conversations with the county and see what potential there is for us to put a facility at Shoal.
Mr. Saffin then, Mr. Weaver.
Speaking of the fuel, I've done some research on my own before your, that's why I know some of the lingo, what Syntec, you know, syngas is and how many, what the gasification is and so on and so forth.
I know very few people know the operating temperature for gasification facilities.
Yeah, I know. I have a strange knowledge base on certain things. I'm just a weird guy. My question, my question is, some of the technology, and I was recently in China, I spent some time in China, and they have, needless to say, tremendous number of people, and they do generate a lot of waste, which they have decided to figure out a way to deal with and also generate electricity because they need that, electricity. They do have, they went to Japan and they did have a contract with some vendor that basically is providing them with systems that do the gasification with a parallelous system. So it basically prepares the fuel and then goes ahead and gasifies them. So he gets the most of it. It reduces very little gas outside, so it's very efficient. But there was a requirement with that system that you have, each one of those units required about, I think, 500 tons per day to operate, and it generated so much electricity. And depending on which region it was, if they needed, if they had 2,000, they put four of these puppies. If they needed more, they put... Is this the type of things that you saw there? They have a certain set, and you have to have a minimum amount of feeding. And as I asked Steve about this, he says, what, 1,500 ton? That's what we produce. And so that would have required like three of these things.
Right.
I can't remember, and I'm sorry about that, but each one of these things for 500 ton, can you tell me how many megawatts it generated?
Well, I can tell you for our demonstration projects, we're looking at a scale, our minimum threshold was 100 tons per day because we wanted to make sure, if you're scaling up to about 1,000 tons per day, we didn't want that gap to be too large. And the projects that we've shortlisted will probably be in the neighborhood of 200 to 300 tons per day. They'll be generating 2 to 8 megawatts based on that amount of feedstock. It definitely varies depending on the feedstock and depending on the type of technology you use. But they are intended to be modular. And what you talk about is an important characteristic. We want to make sure that the technology vendors we have can do a modular system. There's a lot of benefits to that. One is that you can add additional capacity in the future if you need it. You can also cycle the different modules if you have more than one module at a site for easier maintenance and to make sure that there's a continuous management of the waste stream. Obviously, with solid waste, you can't have it stockpiled for very long, so you want to make sure that you're processing it continuously.
And the cost was, as my research indicated, that cost of these units to produce, implement, and operate per 500 ton was something like at a tune of $12 million each. Is that the number that you have reached at that type of a thing?
Well, that's in the ballpark. What we found with our demonstration projects, we're in the neighborhood of about $20 to $50 million for the construction costs and initial operating costs, and that's the number we're working to finance. Probably the more important number for the city and also for the county because we're looking at this as a privately financed project. We want to look at the per-ton cost and is that competitive? For our demonstration scale, we were looking at costs of approximately $50 to $70 per ton. If we had a larger scale, a commercial-scale project, we could bring that number down to even somewhere around $40, $45 per ton. What we're finding especially is that within five to 10 years, that's going to be less expensive than the rail haul system that will be exporting the waste out to the Imperial County landfill. That is projected to be $75 per ton at the outset. The sanitation districts has a blended rate, and they're going to be trying to, they're basically increasing the cost at the Pointe Hills landfill now at a more accelerated rate and banking that additional revenue to keep the cost of the rail haul project down in the initial years. But the, basically, within five years, these new technology will be directly cost-competitive with landfill disposal.
Mr. Weaver is next.
And one more thing, I apologize. You said private organizations are going to come in and do this, with the exception of some aggregate material that they get to build stones, pavers, or whatever. Do they all, they're the ones who sell the syngas? They're the ones who sell the energy? Is that where they make their money?
Well, the financing for the project, the way that it's financed is there would be a guaranteed waste stream. So for, for example, a 300 ton per day project, you would guarantee 300 ton per day at a particular rate, going up with inflation, and it would be for a specified, you know, 20, 25-year timeframe. That's over the life of the financing for the project.
So we sell them the trash?
Right. So, and this would be paid by whoever is depositing the trash. So it would be an agreement worked out by the facility operator to manage that waste stream rather than putting it in the solid waste facility, it would go into the conversion facility. And that tipping fee is essentially subsidized by the sale of the product. So there would be a power purchase agreement with Edison or with the local municipal utility. There would be contracts in place for the other products, if it's a compost material from the anaerobic digestion, the aggregate material, or whatever other products.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weaver.
I guess my own personal frustration is when I chaired the Integrated Waste, I think that had to have been about 15 or more years ago, and I made a presentation to the city council on behalf of the committee at that time. And I've said a number of times since then that we were going to end up doing rail haul if we did not do something. So I talked in environmental campus where we could look at developing technologies. Well, in the 15 years, the technologies apparently have developed. We have a site, large enough that you could put a demonstration project at the back of the landfill area that is isolated from any other, from residential or anything, if anybody's concerned, that's not my backyard. We have the site. I happen to believe one day, every single item that goes into the trash stream will be recycled in some way, broken down for energy or products or whatever, everything. So it will be a neutral inflow. And those that have the projects are going to be reaping some of the reward of having the facility in their yard. We do, how many cities do we do now? Six cities? So we got something going for us in terms of energy production, whatever. I'm not really interested in mining that canyon out. I used to hike in that canyon before they built it, built the landfill in. I'm looking at someday there being golf course or soccer fields or something else on top of it. So making it into a canyon again takes that alternative way. But the future, with the growth rate, millions of people are going to be here, yeah, the economics eventually dictates doing what you're suggesting. I just hope somehow we can get into this finally after 15 years and really get active in a demonstration project, whatever it takes.
Well, the benefit, if it is a soccer field, it's more than 7 by 14, so that'll definitely be an improvement. But I think you're absolutely right that we see that this is really happening now. It's been discussed, and we've talked about the need to shift to this new alternative management for solid waste for a number of years. We really forestalled it by doing the 939 programs, recycling to the extent we could, but we've kind of been pushing off the inevitable. And now we really have entered a period where we're going to have to rail haul unless we really ramp up these technologies.
And where would we take it in a rail haul that would be environmentally sensitive to the area it's going to, that would please all the different agencies and the communities would have to accept it?
In deference to the sanitation districts, I won't comment on that, but I think that the implications are clear that we need to find a better way to manage our waste.
Great. Mr. Starburt.
Mr. Mayor, maybe in conclusion, it seems to me that although we'll continue to stay in touch, the staff level will be good for us to also bring a report and resolution so the council can formally express its interest in continuing to partner with the county of Los Angeles as these, as they progress in their effort to identify appropriate technologies.
Had to be brought up the speed.
Bring that back to you.
Thank you. And if I could, I'm sorry, just one other comment that I wanted to say, that the additional benefit of a resolution is that we're continuing to work with the legislature to develop those permitting frameworks. That's one of the critical issues to make sure that our demonstration project can move forward a little bit more easily. And so that resolution would be very useful.
Well, our lobbyist was here this afternoon.
Frank. Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment in terms of the Japanese model. I'm just sitting here thinking, maybe 10 years ago at least, in a small coastal city in Spain on the Mediterranean, walking home from, or walking to the hotel from dinner, this, the most elaborate garbage truck showed up, and it had just multiple bins. And I'll never forget, the guy that was driving it had a very nice sports coat. And he got out with his sport coat, and he did whatever it was that he needed to do. It was just fascinating. So, you know, 10 years ago in Spain, at least in this city, they had one elaborate recycling system, so.
See the trash police? You see the trash police?
No, there were no trash police, but I remember the guy with his sport coat. I thought, what kind of garbage man is working in a sport coat? So, I mean, it's being done, you know, very stylish. I noticed he didn't pick up anything either. It was all done mechanically, with some sort of mechanical picker that was working the project there. Anyway, we can do the same.
You should have been around the world.
And I'd just like to say, I mean, I think the point of this presentation was the technologies, and I hope no one out there listening thinks that these technologies are so, so new. I, as an eighth-grade student in Introduction to Physical Science, conducted a pyrolysis experiment, pyrolysis of wood, which I think the end result is methanol, if I'm not mistaken. It might be in the curriculum today in eighth graders where you have the test tube with a piece of wood in it, you heat it, and as a result of that, the heating and the absence of oxygen, methanol is produced. So it's not a new technology, but it's a, it's a new application of technology to a problem of trash disposal.
That's actually a very good point. And in fact, the only thing that's new about these technologies is that we're using it to manage solid waste now. Anaerobic digestion has been used for wastewater treatment for decades. It's been around even longer than that. Gasification, that's how we make charcoal for many, many years, hundreds of years. So it's certainly not new technologies, it's a new application and a much better way of managing.
That's what I should have said.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Formative report.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Gasification is not new to local government, by the way.
That's right.
Sometimes this room goes up to 2200 degrees.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did have a, a motion a second, but I do have a card from Albert Hoffman. And we'll entertain Mr. Hoffman's comments on this and then.
Some of this morning's issues, I guess, got resolved today.
No. Right. Mayor, Nigerian council, staff, and the public, Albert Hoffman, resident of Glendale. A few months ago, former mayor Carl Roggio had an article in the paper about this recycling of solid waste, and it... of solid waste, and it turns out when he was manager at JPL, a counterpart of his at Langley, NASA Center in Langley, Virginia, they have a operational recycling thing going on there. It takes waste and the byproduct is energy and solid stuff, I don't know what it is. I invited Carl to speak to us at a homeowner's coordinating council, and he came, and he has a lot of interesting data. This system is working in Langley, Virginia, it's been working for, I guess, over ten years. When you were on the committee fifteen years ago, Councilman Weaver, you must have heard about that through Carl, that must have been about the same time he was there. But this is a working unit that's available in the United States, it's in Virginia, it's running, it's absolutely, you can go see it. And I think it behooves the, us to look into this and see what he's got, because he's local, and it's something that's really already working here. So I think you ought to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second to note and file the report. Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Wintero?
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve.
Next item, please.
Nine is hearings, nine A is director of planning regarding proposed ordinance establishing special setbacks along nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen ninety-one, twenty thirty-five to twenty fifty-seven, twenty-one oh one to twenty-one thirty-three, twenty-two oh one to twenty-three oh nine, twenty-three one nine to twenty-four fifty-seven, twenty-three oh seven to twenty-seven eleven, and twenty-seven one seven to twenty-seven twenty-seven, East Glen Oaks Boulevard, north side, and nineteen seventy-two to twenty fifty-four, twenty-one hundred to twenty-one thirty-two, and twenty-two hundred to twenty-two sixty-four, East Glen Oaks Boulevard, the south side. Nine A one is ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Starburt, we're gonna, we're gonna go to nine B before nine A, is that?
That's correct.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
That's correct.
Okay, so holding the thoughts of nine A, let's, let's move to nine B, Art, if you could.
Mr. Mayor, at nine B is director of planning regarding proposed ordinance establishing special setbacks along twenty-five hundred to twenty-seven eighty, East Glen Oaks Boulevard, that is the south side, and twenty-six oh one to twenty-six fifty-three, East Glen Oaks, that is the north side, and at nine B one is also an ordinance for introduction.
Any conflicts on Mr. Yusefian?
Yes, two items. First of all, I, I need to say that I do have a conflict with this particular thing because I live within five hundred feet of this changing of the zone. The second thing is that I had some issues with how the front setback.
Hold on a second. On nine B, you can't address the item, you can't try to influence the outcome of that item at all, unless it affects your personal interests.
The staff is aware of the issue, and the staff can bring it up and cover it as we present this first item.
Okay, then I'll cover it on the second one, then.
Yeah. Cover it on the second one, the, the conflict on, on nine B relates to your personal residence, and once it's buried in the conflict, do you require to leave the room?
Yes. Leave the room.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So Hassan, let's be sure and cover the issue of the right-of-way and those questions.
Thank you. Let's go straight to Hassan.
Yes. As Kristen is preparing the slide presentation that she has prepared, this, she had, Kristen has prepared the slide presentation to start with item nine B and then go to nine A, although the, the details of the two items will be separately presented. At the beginning, there is a little bit of a background that we hope Mr. Yusefian can get to see. If necessary, we'll repeat it when we repeat item nine A.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Higani, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Glen Oaks Boulevard special setback analysis was actually a request back in spring to examine the front yard setbacks along East Glen Oaks Boulevard. Originally, it was to look from the Glendale Freeway East to Tryon Place on the north side and Blackmore Drive on the south drive. After staff reviewed that, we later expanded the entire review area to the entire canyon. There were similar characteristics that were repeated, specifically to look at the large, uniform front setbacks that are in existing condition along East Glen Oaks. One way to, or a tool to sort of achieve or preserve this characteristic of a large front setback would be through a special setback ordinance. Our zoning code permits such a thing, and the purpose is to permit a greater or lesser setback than the zoning code states in the development standards. It provides flexibility, obviously, for unique circumstances. Staff basically looked at the entire canyon, divided the blocks up into sixteen, sixteen different groups, and upon our review, we concluded that in most blocks, there is a reasonably consistent, uniform front yard setback. And this characteristic is a prominent feature of that entire neighborhood. Specifically, the public right-of-way, that may be the difference of what's improved as opposed to the actual width of the public right-of-way, extends well beyond certain improvements that are just curb and gutter versus curb and gutter, parkway, sidewalk This is, is just a picture of a general characteristic of East Glen Oaks. You can see the uniform setback, the buildings tend to stay in line. Again, another, another example, sort of identifying the uniformity. Currently, the canyon of East Glen Oaks is zoned R1R. It's a single-family hillside zoning designation, and in the R1R zone, it requires a fifteen-foot front yard setback. And what this would, what this would be a consequence of is building to that fifteen-foot front yard setback would alter the very strong pattern of, of uniformity that does exist An alternative, or an alternate to, to doing a special setback ordinance would be to actually change the zoning from R1R to R1. R1 has, as their development standard requirements, a twenty-five foot front yard setback. However, in certain blocks that we found that had a greater setback than twenty-five feet, there may still be an additional need to then place another, a special setback ordinance on top of changing the zone in order to, to maintain that existing characteristic. Some of the differences for R1 requires a smaller side yard setback, six feet versus ten feet, which is the, the current R1R development standard, and different height requirements. The R1R zone allows a thirty-two foot height limit, and the R1 zone allows a twenty-five foot height limit. So in, in part of our study, we went out to the community, we went out twice, June thirteenth, and then August first, as we did sort of the second half of the canyon. And, and pretty much the response that we got back was that the majority of those in attendance favored preserving the setback with a special setback ordinance. There was some interest in changing the, the zone to R1, but that was a very small minority of, of the majority that expressed their views. Specifically, this first part covers blocks eleven, twelve, and thirteen of the one through sixteen, that both nine A and B cover. I'm going to specifically just talk to these three. Staff, we used GIS, so the geographic information system, to estimate an average of the existing front setbacks to do our analysis. But just before the meeting, it, it was sort of question as to the, there may be an inconsistency between our GIS data and what may, may actually be the reality in the field as, as, as to the, the width of the public right-of-way and the physical improvements.
Hey, it might be useful to touch quickly on, at least describe what this issue is of the right-of-way as opposed to the setback and where it gets measured from, so they, everybody can have an understanding of, of the importance of this.
Yes. What was brought to our, our attention just before the meeting tonight was that the information that we may have on our GIS database may be inaccurate. It's because along Glen Oaks, there are areas that you, what you, what appears to be a setback is in fact part of the public right-of-way that has been incorporated into the landscaping of the front yard of a lot of the properties. Kristen had actually noticed that, and along with other staff that had worked in this, when they were visiting the site and when, when meeting with the community, and what Kristen and other staff did, they randomly sampled several properties along the Glen Oaks in the project area, and then they, they actually measured those properties based on the information that they had on where the property line began, and compared that with the GIS information. And to the properties that Kristen actually did test and measured were in fact accurately reflected in the GIS data that we, we tested. Now, we have never really, in my experience in the four, and some four and a half years that I've been here, have we encountered inaccuracies in GIS. However, before the meeting tonight, it was brought to our attention that a particular block, the, a property owner who had the title information about their property, and who had gotten some information apparently from the city engineer, was a little skeptical about the information that we had with regard to where the property lines began and how they related to where the public right-of-way ended. In other words, what appeared on the GIS map that we just generated, by the way, we printed these copies just minutes before the council meeting tonight, and, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to please distribute that amongst council members. This is the information that shows where the public right-of-way is and where the property lines are, and base, this is the information that Kristen used to get to the bottom of her analysis. It so happens that we just learned that the city engineer as well uses the same GIS data. We think it's still possible to make the recommendation that staff has with regard to this analysis, and it's still possible for the city council to make a motion, and this item will come back to, to be voted on in about two, in two weeks. And in the next two weeks, we will get additional data from other sources, and we'll compare that, we'll verify whether or not our GIS information is in fact inaccurate.
Well, if you weren't exactly right, then the house could be, what, legal, non-conforming?
Yeah, that's correct.
I think, I think what it means is because you measure the setback from the right-of-way line, many people will think, for example, my house doesn't have a sidewalk, and my front yard, landscape improvements go right down to the curb, but there is a right-of-way that goes up into my front yard in effect.
Which nobody.
Right, so my setback line, really, my setback really begins at that right-of-way line, which is somewhere up in about the first third of my front yard. It would result in potentially creating more pre-existing, non-conforming structures if somehow these things were off. You could have houses that are actually closer than the setback that's been established. So the thought is that, we've got a full two weeks before this matter will come back if the ordinances are introduced. We can do some additional double-checking and see if in fact we have any anomalies in the GIS data, and if so, then make the adjustments when the ordinances come back to you in two weeks.
Well, I'll be introducing them, Frank, that's a given.
Oh, by the way, I need to open the public hearing on this matter.
Are you done, your presentation?
I have a few more slides to go, to get to the recommendation.
I have a question, though, before you get to the recommendation. As to the real issue here, the issue is whether we're going to measure it from the center of the street, from the curb, from the right-of-way, is to maintain the uniform distance of the homes along the block so that there's not a home that sticks way up front towards the street? Is that correct?
That is the goal, but for measurement of setbacks, we measure from the property line, the front property line, wherever that may be.
So, so you measure from the right-of-way line, not necessarily the improvement line? And it's, it's likely that in every block, it's going to be pretty consistent. Now, again, we may find there's an anomaly in a block, and indeed, they may be too close to the right-of-way line, the GIS may be off, I guess it's, it's possible, we don't know that, we don't think it is, but it could be, in which case you'd probably see it consistent in, in one whole block.
The point that was trying to be prevented is somebody putting a ten-foot addition on the front of their house.
Right.
And sticking out like a sore thumb.
Extending it.
And on, and others, oh, they did it, I do it. All of a sudden, homes are doubling by going into the front setback area.
So this issue is, is really a clarification on the location of that right-of-way, so when we give, when we come up with a, a number, that it's actually reflecting what we intend to do.
Correct.
But as Mr. Weaver points out, the underlying purpose here is to create a setback so that you will maintain the consistency of setbacks in each of these blocks. It's just that the secondary issue arose is whether or not we were utilizing good data to establish the setback. We think we are, but again, it can be double-checked between now and it comes back to you if the ordinances are introduced.
And if, when we verify the data, we realize that the information that we have on our GIS database is inaccurate, we'll adjust the, the data, and we'll come up with an updated or tweaked version of the setbacks, because it's not our intention to create non-conformities. It's only our intention to maintain the consistency.
I understand. So you'll double-check that, and Kristen?
We will double-check.
So, so for this first ordinance, block, blocks eleven, twelve, and thirteen, specifically block eleven is sort of that example of, it looks like the setback might be greater, but really where their front property line falls, based on the data we have, is much closer to, to the house than what it appears to be. So in block eleven, they have very minimal, minimal setbacks, some even less than fifteen feet, which is, which is the, the front yard setback requirement of that zone currently. Block twelve had an average setback of twenty-six and a half, and block thirteen had an average front yard setback of thirty-six.
Arcable, thirty-six feet average. That's Yusefian's block.
So this is an example of the GIS map that we used, the dark heavy outline around each block that fronts on East Glen Oaks, that sort of being the, the line or the, the mark of, of what's the front yard, front property line. And you can kind of see in the footprints of the, the existing building footprint, you can kind of see the uniformity of setbacks that do exist, block by block.
So the interesting thing, most of those homes were built in the thirties and forties, you know, they haven't changed since then.
Yes.
You know, I don't, I don't know why they built them all so far back and everything in those days, but I guess having a big front lawn was the thing.
Gives the horses more room to graze.
Oh.
And this, this picture specifically is, is block eleven that I mentioned earlier, and it, it sort of has that deceiving appearance. You can see the, the curb and gutter and the sidewalk, and what appears to be, you know, from the back of the sidewalk to the house, a large setback, but really that right-of-way extends probably beyond those trees into the property. And, and really, their, their front setback is, is much smaller than, than the appearance it gives.
So those trees may be city trees?
Correct.
So we maintain those trees?
So that house, I mean, not to pick on that house, I don't know whose, whose home that is, but would be illegal, non-conforming?
Is already non-conforming, correct.
Out in the fifteen-foot.
Correct. And so that, so for, in the recommendation portion, that's why we, we made no recommendation to make any changes to block eleven, just keep the fifteen-foot that the zoning currently places, because many of the structures already are non-conforming. Block twelve, which was sort of the south side of the street, we recommend twenty-five feet, but looking at all of block twelve, it did have the least uniformity of front yard setbacks of, of all the blocks that we surveyed. We could break it up, but that may lead to some confusion as to, okay, what parts have a front yard setback, which ones don't. An alternative that council could consider is to not propose any special setback along, specifically, block twelve.
Block twelve has the hillside behind it.
Correct.
Depending on how far out that hill went towards the street would vary the.
Correct, and yet this is block twelve in the GIS, and, you know, the property lines kind of dip in here, correct. And then for block thirteen, it had more consistency, and so we recommend a thirty-five foot front yard setback.
Okay.
And that concludes this portion. The remaining slides I have relate to the other ordinance.
Is that B?
Mr. Weaver, that's nine B.
This is nine B.
This is nine B.
Nine B.
So the remaining slides will be for nine A.
I'd like to introduce the.
Um, can we have the cards after the introduction, or does that need to be before the introduction? Uh, let's see what I have. I have nine A. Robin Lee Hanson says item nine. Do you mean nine B or nine A? Okay, so I have two.
Wait.
Yes, please wait. I have two cards on nine A, so this is nine B.
All I'd like to say is.
Public hearing.
All I'd like to say, having lived in that canyon sixty-eight years, and never seen it changed, if there's any kind of a legacy I'd like to leave, is to leave this, leave this world knowing that what I've seen. what I've seen in that canyon all my life stays the same in terms of those setbacks. It would be a shame if we started building into the front areas, so...
Except by variance.
Except by... So I'd like to introduce the ordinance at 9B1.
Thank you.
It's great.
The ordinance is introduced.
Mr. Mayor, well, in the usual course, it would normally come back in a week, but given the absences next week, the matter will come back on October 9th for final consideration.
Okay, everyone's okay with that? Let's move to, should we invite Mr. Yusefian to join us?
Take a vote on that?
I'll get up, have a take a vote on that. 9A, please.
Now we'll go down with the score.
9A, and I think that's been read into the record, we need to repeat that?
It has, but you'll have to open the hearing.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on 9A.
Got cards.
I do have some cards on that. Let's hear from the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yusefian.
I'd like to talk about block 13. I know it's not, can I talk about it, City Attorney?
No.
Block 13 is my block that's not even affected.
It's inextricably intertwined with 9B. It was part of 9B. That item was discussed and addressed initially so that you could participate in 9A, which is unrelated to blocks 11, 12, and 13. You should not be speaking on 11, 12, or 13, sir.
My problem is, that is inaccurate.
Well, that's my advice. I know you had that problem, but my advice is, you can't influence the outcome of that because your block is intertwined and interconnected with blocks 11 and 12 and 13. They're all collected, they're all put together or collected as one for discussion. But I believe staff is aware of it.
Yeah. Wait a second. I think the staff pulled a fast one on me. I protest, and whatever you want to do, you can do. First, you tell me I am not affected by this. Then you tell me that there's a 35-foot setback, and then you tell me that I can't even talk about the inaccuracy. That block has only a 22-foot setback. I do not have 35-foot setback. I wish I had 35-foot setback. I don't, okay? I went and pulled a permit in this city, and I had to check with my documents and everything else. Now, I was told specifically, don't worry, your block is not affected. And then I see 9B is part of this block. I specifically brought that point up. I did not get a notice from the planning department about the hearing. And you, Mr. Scott, told me I was not affected. So it does not matter, you did not get a notice. Then on those bases, I protest that these activities are illegal, because if that is going to affect this block, I did not get a notice of hearing for that particular block. And I'm a property owner, I can go over here, speak, or whatever you want to speak, but I think these proceedings are illegal, Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I strongly disagree. If you're talking about illegality because of a lack of notice...
Yes. You did not notice me, and I have a tape of last week's when you specifically said, and Mr. Starbert said, and the staff said, that block's not affected. So what's going on?
I think I indicated to you that I didn't believe that that block was affected, because I thought it was outside the area. I later found out that it was, and I also later found out...
And Mr. Starbert told me specifically, because I asked about it, because I had a previous agenda, and I asked, those blocks, it says from here to there. You know, you may think I came from a banana boat, but I can read numbers. And the numbers told me that this block was affected. You know, this is getting to be too much, I wish I brought some Fabreeze, because there's way too much horse manure in this city.
That was the last item. That was gasification, the last issue.
Yeah, I know.
Let me, yes, Mr. Yusefian came to me earlier today and asked about this item, and I frankly was under the impression that he was within 500 feet, so I was not aware that his house was part of block 13. But irrespective of that, what I indicated, Mr. Yusefian, to the council, and the council has been in agreement on, is we will look very closely at the whole issue of the, whether or not this is an accurate representation on which the staff has based the 35-foot setback recommendation. If that's an error, if indeed the GIS is not reflective of what's actually out there, we'll make that correction and bring it back in two weeks so that this doesn't go forward.
And we tried to specifically address those concerns in our discussion.
And we'll confer with you as a property owner on the outcome of that data. And if it's inaccurate, then we can make the correction in two weeks.
Well, I just, my issue with that 35 feet is, you're going to make my property nonconforming, which means just in case there's something that happens and that property has to be torn down, I do have a very unique property, because I don't have the full length. GIS is full of bunks. My property does not go all the way to the end.
Bob, you're conflicted on this. I think you gotta just be careful with what you're saying.
He has a right to speak from down below on his personal interests, because this particular effect on his property affects his personal interests.
Now, I'm on five minutes. You're taking my property rights away, Mr. Mayor.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Bob Yusefian.
And is there a motion to reopen 9... Just a second, Mr. Yusefian. Let's just slow down. Do we need to reopen 9B?
You really don't. It's more of an exalting form over substance. He has a right to speak on a matter that affects his personal interests. He's talking about his personal home, which is clearly his personal interest. As long as it's focused on his personal home, it's not in violation of FPPC regulations?
Okay, then...
And I think that's what he's doing, is addressing it as his personal home.
That's exactly what I'm doing, just like Mr. Mayor spoke about his personal fence on his front yard.
Yeah, same thing.
We're going to go to 9B, and take one more speaker from the audience. You can fill out a card afterwards.
I'll fill a card, yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I earlier stated, I had been given information that was inaccurate by staff, and I find it very deceiving when staff tells a council member false information. The reason, if I knew this was going to be affected, I would say that your information is inaccurate. When we purchased this property, we have a deed. I've been a contractor since 1980, and I know how to read a deed, and I know how to prepare documents for a permit that I had to get from the city of Glendale to put a fence wall on my property. As I moved in the direction of putting a fence wall on my property and also changed the windows on my house, it was very obvious that I had to have a full plot plan. I got an architect to draw me a full plot plan. A plot plan showed that after talking to Mr. Gulanyan, which is our city engineer, that the right of way on that section of the street is 70 feet. Current right of way that is, has been improved is 40 feet. So 70 feet means from the center to my property right of way, or my property line is 35 feet. So in reality, my property starts from the edge of my big tree, and all of you have seen my big tree. And that tree is about inches away from the city right of way, which means from the curb, I am 15 feet in. From 15 feet in to the face of the house is 22 feet. I did pull a permit that also allowed me to put a four-foot wall in that setback, because at the time, it was R1R, and the setback is 15 feet. So I was within the 15-feet requirement. What you've done in here is, you are saying 35 feet. 35 feet of property I don't own. The city owns 15 feet of that front setback. Now, if you want to give me your 15 feet, then that's fine with me. Make it 35 feet. But you do not, none of these people on block 13 own all of that right of way. That belongs to City of Glendale. Same thing across the street. Your GIS map, I hate to say this, everybody thinks that GIS map is something that Moses brought down. No, this is information that has been put in by a human being in a computer. Doesn't necessarily mean it's correct. If it's correct, then you know what? Then your staff did not tell the truth when they told me that my property line doesn't start at the back of my sidewalk.
And let me just repeat what we tried to address, and we were made aware that there may be some issues as to the accuracy of the GIS and the location of the city's right of way vis-à-vis the interface with the private property line. And it was our direction to staff to go back and check and make sure that the interface line is as depicted. The result that we're looking for is not to make everyone nonconforming on that, but to correctly identify the distance and the average distance between the right of way, the end of the city's right of way, and the beginning of the structures on that block 13.
Okay. And Mr. City Attorney, what is the remedy for not receiving a notice for changing...
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because I believe there was notice, and Mr. Hagani can properly articulate, we use the LA County Assessor's records, and apparently according to the records that we have, notice was given to your property, but in a different name, I guess a prior owner. And consistent with the law, that's appropriate notice, even though you may not have...
Prior owner?
Well, Mr. Hagani can give you the details. He's actually checked it out. I asked him to.
Yes, actually, I asked Kristen to look in...
I don't know if we need to discuss that in public, but...
The allegation or the statement was that perhaps these proceedings are unlawful because of improper notice, so I think it's appropriate along the record that appropriate public notice was given, consistent with the records.
I thought that'd be something private, if there's an assessor's issue or something.
Well, I have an issue with that, Mr. Mayor, in all due respect. Every one of you, with the exception of Mr. Weaver, has been in my house. Almost every one of you. And the notice didn't go to Bob Yusefian or Sue Eller? Hello?
Let's find out how the notice went out, and the typical process...
And this tells me something.
The process is used.
If all of you guys couldn't send me a letter, I wonder how many people actually got a notice? And how many people actually attended these meetings? And so that's my question. And I think...
For the record, I wasn't in charge of sending out the...
No, I know you weren't, but it says something about how the system works.
Well, let's address the issue then.
There's a flaw.
The notices are sent to the information that we get from the county assessors, and that's a standard notice. We have about 100,000 properties in Glendale, and every time we use a, we send notices, we get our information from the database from the county. And it's not uncommon that we receive a number of notices that are sent back to us. It has not only been my experience here in Glendale, but in my experience in every city that I've ever worked at. And Kristen, in fact, looked at the list of a batch of returned notices, and for the address that Mr. Yusefian resides, we actually have a returned notice in the name of, by the name of Roach, right?
Roach.
Roach, right. And that was among the batch, and Kristen, if you would please hold up the batch of the returned notices. This is in fact consistent with the number of notices we usually get for a project of this size. And I do understand the concern that we should have, and we probably should have specifically made sure to send a second notice to Mr. Yusefian himself, knowing that he is one of the residents in that area, and in this case, we did not do. As we do not, every time we send notices, go through every address and verify that the individuals we know that are in contact with us, whether or not their names are listed. We rely on the county assessor's information, and the county assessor's information is commonly behind in updating their data. And we apologize for that, but it happens often.
Five years?
And sometimes longer.
It may be a county. The point is, just from my little corner of the world, lawfully, it does not defeat the public notice provisions of the hearing, because it's not uncommon that that does happen, whether it's a council member or someone else. It happens. I mean, I've been to your house, I know where you live, but it doesn't defeat the lawfulness of the proceedings. The majority of this council could decide they want to continue the matter and provide notice again.
How many notices have been returned?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight notices have, 48 individuals on this street do not know what's happening tonight. We are changing their properties, we are changing their setbacks, they have no clue. So think about the legalities of that. Think about the fairness of that. Forty-eight, forget me, 48 other people have no clue, and I've owned this property for five years.
The courts have noted that when you use the county assessor's records...
Courts don't mean it's right, Mr. City Attorney.
Well, and again, I pointed out...
It's an issue of justice.
The majority of the, if the majority of the council wants to continue this for hand delivery of notices or the like, that's certainly within the prerogative of the council...
At least those 48 would have been nice, at least find out who they are, so they know what the heck is going on.
And it's a prerogative of this council, but the normal noticing procedures, use the county assessor's records.
Mr. Starbert?
Can I point out again, your direction to us was to be sensitive to this issue. And indeed, if Mr. Yusefian is correct and we're using bad data, the intent is not to create more pre-existing nonconforming houses, but to come back and correct the situation. Not to put Mr. Yusefian and his home in a compromised situation. And that's what we'll do.
But the issue is not just about Mr. Yusefian. The issue is, what happens to block 1? What happens to block 3? What happens to block 5? What happens to block 4? What happens to 6? I don't own property in all of these blocks, and if those notices did not go to any of these people...
Mr. Mayor, two issues, the notices and the GIS. We will address the GIS issue, and we'll make sure it's consistent throughout every one of the blocks. And if it isn't, we'll come back and tell you in two weeks. The noticing is a different issue. We use the county rolls. If we need to do something to double-check the rolls and see to what extent they're outdated, or do second notices, we can do it. And the city attorney's pointed out, if you want to hold this matter over and notice the 48, you have that prerogative.
And call Mike Antonovich, too, and tell him to get the county assessor's...
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to conduct an investigation into the propriety of the county assessor's office, were the notice of change of ownerships filed timely, correctly sent to the right spot. This is a can of worms, I think, we can get into, in terms of going to the county's record-keeping. I'm not sure that's our role at this point. If there's a more accurate method of obtaining notice, I'd like to hear about it, but I think the assessment records are perhaps the most accurate.
We're losing, we're forgetting what the whole thing was about when I asked this to be put on. It was to protect front yard additions over all the existing homes up there. You can talk about a second story, you can talk about in the rear, but not allow any block to start developing on their front lawns. That was the whole purpose, to protect the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, let's go to 9A. I opened the public hearing, and I have speakers, Ms. Hansen, followed by Mr. Mohell.
My name is Robin Lee Hansen. I am in block 5 of Glen Oaks Boulevard. I'd really like to commend Dave Weaver. Thank you very much for bringing this forth. We were very concerned, and there were, Mr. Yusefian, many people who came to the meeting that I attended. There were probably 45 people or more? 25 to 30 people. And there is a lot of moving in the canyon, you know, since your wife is a realtor, you know that very well.
I understand that. People don't live forever, people have to move. I understand that concept.
The thing that really makes me really happy about this, my friend who is with me tonight lives in Zone 3, and she has had a neighbor, as I brought up to you, Mr. Weaver, last year, that is still building onto his monstrosity.
Four years.
Four years plus.
Oh, more than four.
And I'd like to know, how come his, although it has nothing to do with this, how long is a permit good? I mean, he's been building on this...
That's another issue, but I did, that was the trigger for me.
But this is going to, this is one of the major reasons that Mr. Weaver came up with this, because we kept bending his ear about it. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you very much to Chris Ben Asp, because she gave us so much comfort and so much good information. We were very concerned perhaps that you guys were going to be widening Glen Oaks. She assured us that that was not in the pipeline, and...
Question, do you neighbors talk to each other in the...
Yes, we did. We tried to talk to everyone to get a lot of people going, but as you know, our neighborhood, particularly in my area, I think I'm the youngest person on the block. Doggone close.
Yeah, I grew up, I grew up with old...
Yeah, and my husband was born in that house, or not in the house, but, you know, in 1955. So, you know, we've owned that house since the '30s. So, you know, we're longtime residents, too. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you on the side that you have the sidewalk?
I have the sidewalk.
You do have the sidewalk?
The north side.
Okay. And how much is your existing setback? Do you know?
Yeah, it's about 30, is it 32 feet? It's been about...
The average of block 5 was 33 feet.
Okay.
I have quite a bit.
Yeah, I think when you check the GIS, you'll find out that she doesn't have 33 feet. You have the same problem I do.
I still have a big line. You're welcome to a little of it.
Thank you, Ms. Hansen.
Turn on the cards.
I have no more, Mr. Mohl doesn't appear to be in the room. I will close the public hearing.
I'd like to introduce 9A1.
Thank you. 9A1 is introduced. 9C has been continued.
Actually, you indicated it's likely to be continued. We need to read it in the record and continue formally.
Okay, let's read 9C then.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, 9C is interim director of Glendale Water and Power. This is continued from 5/29/07 and 6/12/07, regarding resolution of necessity declaring the public need to acquire certain property interests by eminent domain. C1 is resolution declaring public interest and necessity to condemn certain property interests.
Do I have a motion to continue this to...
October 9th without further public notice?
October 9th without further notice.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, which council member?
Mr. Weaver.
And Quintero seconded, thank you. Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
With the possibility that the matter actually may be taken off calendar if an appropriate settlement is reached. New business.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.1A5 and Charter Article 8, Section 1, the following individuals are hereby approved and promoted as follows. Carmen Marino, to the position of General Counsel, Police. Stephen Lenz, to the position of General Counsel, Glendale Water and Power. Christina Sansone, to the position of General Counsel, Public Works. Gillian Van Myten, to the position of General Counsel, Redevelopment Services for the City of Glendale. And further, that a written copy of this motion be transcribed, certified, and delivered by the City Clerk to the Office of the Civil Service Commission of the City of Glendale as and for the written statement required by Article 24, Section 5, Subsection 2 of the Charter for the suspension of competition for said offices.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Assuming we have no written communications, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yusefian?
Before you adjourn, I would like to have a staff provide me with all the address of the properties that were not delivered. I'm going to hand-deliver them myself.
Do we have a second? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver.